I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item on the list is to welcome our new board member, Grant Neunaker. Grant is a past trustee, served two full terms on the board, and now is rejoining. And we're all very happy to welcome Grant back onto the board. Grant will be assuming the responsibilities of the water liaison and also stay on the committee for the code revisions while he's with us. And then that, I'd like to introduce our judge, Willie Sanchez, to do the swearing in.
I, in state unit.
I, Brent Neunaker.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of village trustee.
The duties of village trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And any speech?
I look forward to helping out again with the water project and getting the zoning revisions done and all sorts of other things. And assisting everybody else.
Thank you, Brent.
Don't really have anything prepared. Thank you.
The next item on the list is a special recognition to the Rhinebeck Garden Club. The Rhinebeck Garden Club, let me just get my notes out here so I don't miss anything. The Rhinebeck Garden Club was formed in 1931, so it's been 90 years, an incredible, incredible tenure.
Twenty-seven.
Federated in 1931, but formed in 1927. But you're federated in New York State in 1931. You have 47 members, is that correct?
Yeah.
Very good. I think I'm going to read all 47 off of my notes. But they have a purpose, and they've been, for the past 90 years, they've been doing a lot to help beautify our village. And their purpose is to increase knowledge of gardening, provide a welcoming and supportive social environment, cultivate interest in gardening, foster appreciation and increase awareness of our native plants, our wildlife, habitat destruction, and preservation of our natural resources. They do a lot to enhance our community, and they acquire range and design skills, and continue our philanthropy and their scholarship role in the community. So I want to formally thank the, I'd like to have them all come up if you don't mind. Come over here. Such an honor to have you guys here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who should I be to introduce?
I'm the president.
You're the president? Very nice.
Yes.
Stephen, congratulations.
Thank you.
On 90 years of service to the community of Rhinebeck Garden Club.
Thank you very much.
Let me just introduce everybody. I mean, I'll let you guys introduce yourselves, probably be the best way, because I apologize, I don't know you all, but I could read the membership rule or...
Oh, no.
No.
No, I'm Lorraine Murphy. I live in the woods in the village of Rhinebeck.
I'm Carol Duss. I live in Red Hook.
Sue Cliston, and I live in the town of Rhinebeck.
Kathy Bradley, I live in Rhinebeck.
I'm Kathleen Kumanacker, and I live four miles east of the village.
Carrie Olson, I live in the village.
I'm Brenda Brockett. I don't live in the village. I live about two and a half miles away from Kathy. Anyway, it's a pleasure being here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you.
We're done.
Stephen, let me just give you a little...
Thank you, Terry. Thank you.
Stephen?
Thank you, Terry. Thank you. Appreciate it, yeah.
Come to our plant sale on Saturday. Thank you.
Right inside. Thank you.
Next, our agenda is our county legislator, Joel Tyner, please.
Grant, congratulations. Welcome back. So I've come bringing tidings of good news. Last night was the first night in a long time that got one of my resolutions passed unanimously. It was watered down significantly. Basically, the original version of the resolution was for the county legislature to call for the creation of a public-private task force towards Dutchess County being fossil fuel-free by 2030, based on the 2013 Cornell-Stanford report. That part of the resolution was four years old, because it was a 2013 report, and basically for four years, they didn't allow it onto the agenda for committee day in the county legislature. They finally allowed it on, but then the only way they would allow it to be passed is they basically watered it down to, whereas a Cornell-Stanford report suggested, you know, that New York State could be fossil fuel-free by 2030, therefore, the Dutchess County Legislature urges Dutchess County to, you know, look at different ways to reduce fossil fuel use, which is good. I'm glad, I'm glad something happened, but it wasn't quite what a lot of us wanted. There's the village of Rhinebeck and the town of La Grange, a lot of different municipalities in Dutchess County, and 15 counties. There's actually about 198 municipalities all across the state that are part of the DEC Climate Smart Communities Program that I tried to get that amendment passed last night. That failed. The governor Cuomo, I don't agree with Governor Cuomo on everything, but he's, you know, the state's clean energy standard by the Public Service Commission, 50% renewable energy sources by 2030. I tried to get that passed last night in the county legislature. They wouldn't allow that amendment, but at least we got, we got that thing passed. And a lot of folks, activists from the Dutchess County Progressive Action Alliance testified last night, also last Thursday. We are putting together our 4F Club. You heard about the 4H Club? The 4F Club is Fossil Fuel-Free Fridays. The second Friday of each month, we're putting together a task force of our own towards the goal of Dutchess County being fossil fuel-free by 2030. And those meetings, everybody's invited to those, are on the 6th floor of the county office building in the county legislature's offices. That's on 22 Margaret Street, Poughkeepsie. Statewide, it would create 60,000, I'm sorry, just in Dutchess County, over the next 13 years, would create 60,000 new jobs and save $540 million a year going fossil fuel-free. If you go to G E L F N Y dot org or thesolutionsproject.org. For over a decade, I've been pushing for the county to purchase more hybrid vehicles. They don't just save money on fuel costs, they save money on maintenance costs. And so we got a bunch more of those last night, not as much as I would have wanted. One of the things that I distributed, a big issue that Terry Gibson, you know, worked on, Lyme disease. And I know folks in Rhinebeck and Clinton have talked to me about this for many years. In Dutchess County, unfortunately, we are not like Massachusetts and Rhode Island, Connecticut, where if you have Lyme disease or tick-borne disease and you need more than three or four weeks of antibiotics, your health insurance covers that, not here in Dutchess County, not in New York State. Eight years ago, I got a resolution passed 22 to 3 in the Dutchess County Legislature, eight out of 11 Republicans voted for it eight years ago, to send a message in support of Joel Miller, the former Assemblyman, Joel Miller's legislation, to take care of this. There are only two members of the state senate co-sponsoring this legislation. Terry's not around anymore. Only two Democrats. There's a lot of Democrats and Republicans in Albany, on the senate and the assembly that just don't seem to get this is a huge issue. So I wanted to give a shout-out to Donna Bolner, Angela Flesland, Don Sagliano, Jerry Landisi, Marge Horton, and Alan Sermon. Those six county legislators I just mentioned are not Democrats. I actually got those six Republicans to sign onto my letter last night, along with a bunch of folks in my own caucus, saying that this should not be a political football, this should not be a partisan issue. If you are living in Rhinebeck or Clinton or Dutchess County or New York State and you need more than four weeks antibiotics, your health insurance should cover that. The other letter I circulated, I don't know if you guys want to act on this, or individual letters or group, May 19th is the deadline to weigh in with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation as far as Seeker, the State Environmental Quality Review Act. The Sierra Club Atlantic Chapter sent out information, basically, unfortunately, there are some people who want to water down Seeker. They want to weaken it. You know, fracking was banned eventually, but the scoping that took place, all the information that came forward over the six years that that was debated and discussed, that was able to be used. The DEC wants to change that so that new information that's discovered cannot be part of the decision-making process, which is ludicrous. And there's a lot of real estate developers who want to do whatever they want, and who cares what anybody says. So it's really important that we keep Seeker strong. So I urge you to contact me or the Sierra Club and contact the DEC on that. Another letter I circulated, a bunch of us in the county legislature signed on to, not just pushing for single payer, but also to not blow a $4 billion hole in the state budget, the Affordable Care Act, whatever you can do on a local level. My stepfather died in 1999 in my arms. I was trying to give him CPR, it didn't work out. He knew he was very sick, he was very ill. He died of a heart attack at the age of 59. And there's 45,000 people like that every year in this country who die that they don't have health insurance. So I'm hoping that the Affordable Care Act is not torn to shreds. I wanted to invite everybody back on the Lyme issue, Thursday, May 25th. Thanks to Fred Nagel, I'm going to be hosting a screening of Under Our Skin. It's a movie about Lyme disease and tick-borne disease. It really is quite a documentary. That's going to be Thursday, May 25th, across the way, Rhinebeck Town Hall at 5:30 PM. There are dozens of folks who have just been accused of criminal possession of a nonviolent, of a controlled substance. No violent acts, not drug dealing. Those people are still being held in our county jail. That concerns me and a lot of other people. And the last thing I wanted to say, I wanted to give another shout-out to Mark Coviello, who's a member of the Independence Party, county legislator from Beekman, who now caucuses with us. And he and I, and many other legislators, we are pushing for Dutchess County to, you know, basically level the playing field, one person, one vote. It shouldn't be about who has, you know, the most money as far as what politics are. And the folks from the Dutchess County Progressive Action Alliance have been in touch with Ulster County. There's a bunch of Republicans and Democrats just across the river in the Ulster County Legislature that are co-sponsoring legislation to end pay-to-play, these big county contracts that just happen to go to these big campaign contributors. And we have been pushing for the same legislation that Orange County passed, where the Republican majority three years ago. We're trying to get that on the agenda. May 21st, in just a little bit, the Dutchess County Legislature Committee Chairs are going to meet, and they're going to decide if our law is even allowed onto the agenda. They haven't allowed it onto the agenda for committee meeting in years. And the Poughkeepsie Journal's editorialized for it, Rockland County passed, Orange County, Ulster County. So anybody who cares about democracy, you know, $38 million of our money over the last six years went to the same 23 companies who gave, you know, $151,000 to the county executive and the county Republican committee, okay? That's not right. That's not democracy. And so if you care about democracy, whether you're a Republican or a Democrat, it's bipartisan, it's nonpartisan. We got Mark Coviello, myself. Please contact the county legislature. Just allow that to be discussed and voted on, because they haven't allowed that law to clean up Dutchess County government. They haven't even allowed it onto the agenda for committee day in 10 years. I'd also say, when somebody tells me to meet me at the JC, the Lyons Mini Park, and I was parking, I was hoping that that person would, and I was just inside joke of a man. So I was helping out during Arbor Day.
Arbor Day. Joel, before you sit down, you, a lot of information, but you quickly talked about the county, or you did something for, with fossil fuels with EV cars? You got more cars or...
With...
My direct question is...
Hybrids. I think it was seven out of 14 vehicles purchased last night, passed last night, hybrids. Last week it was four, I mean, last year it was four. What's frustrating to me is National Geographic, national publicity to my kind and Ulster County, because they got these, I don't know, nine or 11 different plug-in charging stations. Like, why can't we do that? And NYSERD and DEC are doing things like offering grants, so anything, you know, this is 2017, and I'm tired of Ulster County beating us like Six Ways to Sunday and all these things.
Well, my question, was there any money available for plug-in stations?
Well, the county, the county doesn't have any money. Oh, yes, that's right. What I forgot to mention, $50 million fund balance. There is no reason why, thank you for reminding me, Gary, Mayor Bassett, there is no reason why Dutchess County should not be sharing a lot more with the village of Rhinebeck, town of Rhinebeck, the supervisors here tonight, the town of Clinton. It is beyond, it's obscene for the county to be sitting on that kind of cash. Whether it's revisiting the county sales tax revenue sharing formula, basically, town of Rhinebeck, village of Rhinebeck, town of Clinton have lost about $100,000 a year for the last four years. And so I can't do it alone. I've been pushing and pushing, members of my own caucus to work with me. City of Poughkeepsie has really gotten the raw end of the deal, but a lot of people are sort of intimidated. County executives kind of an imposing figure, but if everybody, the Dutchess County Association of Supervisors and Mayors, somebody sends a letter and says, 59, last year was a $57 million fund balance. Remember, from 1996 to 2012, average fund balance was 20 million a year. And all of a sudden, they changed the county sales tax revenue sharing formula, and it's 57 million last year. 59. The county is sitting on money, and it's not, that's not fair for Marcus to have all that money to play with, and the municipalities are in austerity. In my own opinion.
Thank you all. Department reports. Treasury report.
Okay, thank you. The treasurer's report is for the month of April, the period ending April 30th. In the tax and general fund, the end of the month with $1,117,199. In the water fund, ended the month with $682,346.19. And the sewer fund ended the month with $638,071.92. Vouchers presented for payment, in the general fund, total 107,2603. In the water fund, $31,961.28. And in the sewer fund, $156,512.66. There was a couple capital water system improvement bills that total $9,218. And it was an escrow payment of $193.25. And I'd just like to make a point that the sewer vouchers in the sewer fund were high this month because we had two long-term debt payments included with that total. The operating statement is provided with the expenses through the period ending May 9th. All the bills that we've received so far are in there. The water and sewer adjustments have been reviewed and signed off by the water and sewer department liaisons and are presented for your authorization. The budget for the fiscal year 2017-18 was adopted on April 26th and is filed with the village clerk and the New York State Comptroller's Office. Tax collection will begin on June 1st. Budget amendments are attached, they're on a separate sheet, and I will just review those. There are some transfer of funds that I'm requesting. One is to correct the allocation of a salary line item for the clerk, deputy clerk and treasurer, to allocate that to the water and sewer, to the water and sewer line items for the same thing in the amount of $1,454. Also, for budget transfers, I'm requesting that the board authorize the transfers of the budget, budgeted capital amounts to the Capital Fire, $50,000. To the Capital Streets, $7,500. To the Capital Police Account, $7,500. And to the Parks and Rec, $10,000. And our newly established capital project, the Capital Sidewalks Account, $15,000 was budgeted for that. Moving on, I'll just go through everything, and then you can ask questions after that. The budget, the line items for budget amendments are following that. And instead of going through each one, if you just want to go down the line, because there's also a page two on it, I tried to keep them all within the department that, the department that they came from, that they were needed from. On the very last page, I'm requesting to add a line item to the 1718 budget in the Sewer Department and creating an 8110 for line item for administrative fees for the gardens. Currently, we, the gardens pays us, and then we pay their long-term debt, and we pay the principal and interest every year. However, there's always this $1,124 administrative fee, and we just don't really have a place for it, so I wanted to just itemize a special line item for that.
All?
That's it.
Any questions? Do we have a motion to approve the water and sewer adjustments?
I make a motion to approve the water and sewer adjustments as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We also need a motion to approve the transfer of funds from the accounts. So as they were listed in the budget report that the treasurer read through, I have a motion to approve the transfer of funds as still noted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And then the line, we also need to approve, I believe, the amendments of the 1718 budget, which, the first amendment to our budget, hopefully, yes.
I move, will you approve that as opposed? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
And thank you for all, everything you did to help us, get us to the point where we adopted a budget in time, you know, meeting the deadline date, and also the hard work that you guys have put in right now to get us to the year-end budget, which is so crucial. So thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Police report. We actually have two. We did not have a review of the reports from the month of March, because we had several special meetings on the budget, and they kind of followed closely after our previous budget meet, our previous board meeting. So we're including a lot of that information into this meeting. So for the police report for March, we have total number of incidents in the town were 28, total incidents in the village 100, total tickets in the town 22, total tickets in the village were 60, total number of arrests were six, and the total number of accidents were nine. That was for the month of March. For April, total number of incidents in the town 21, total of incidents in the village 76, total number of tickets in the town 17, total number of tickets in the village 65, total arrests one, total number of incidents eight. Police report for the months of March and April. Fire department report. I have a fire department report which summarizes, summarized as dated May 9th. For the month of April 2017, there were a total of 80 alarms for the fire department, 21 calls, 12 in the town, six in the village, and three outside of Rhinebeck calls. There were also 55 EMS calls, 28 in the town, 21 in the village, and five mutual aid to Hillside, and one mutual aid to Red Hook. There are also four MBAs, one in the town, two in the village, and one MA, one mutual aid to Red Hook. The ambulance did not respond to 10 calls, so the average response time was 83 percent. A new truck is expected to be delivered in first part of June. Members will be going to plant to inspect the truck prior to delivery. Both Kyle and Chrissy had attended the first meeting with other officials regarding the center clause, and the fire department personnel have been completing various classes of training requirements to make sure we are fully compliant with OSHA standards, and member physicals were conducted last month. Kyle, is there anything you would like to add in regard to the truck?
Just, you know, we should see it hopefully at the end of June. I guess it's scheduled in a couple of weeks, it's Sunday 3, that respect out, to go do the final inspection before it's released to garrison and made the trip back to, back to here.
And that's expected on what, in June? You know, I have a date...
We don't have exact date right now. We're still working with the factory and manufacturer on that.
But it's looking good.
Yep.
Thank you.
What is a MVA?
Motor vehicle accident. Sorry.
Kyle, there's also a new member?
Yeah. Did you get that email?
Yeah, but I don't have to hear.
We have a new member that we accepted last night, Lily Knapp.
I'm sorry, Kyle. Do you want to come on?
We have a new member that the board accepted last night, Lily Knapp, the Disney juror.
Yes, I saw Lily, I saw her in the dark condition. We need a motion to approve, we need a motion to approve Lily Knapp as a member to the Rhinebeck Fire Department. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Tell Lily thank you. Looking forward to her service to our fire department.
And you'll be in touch with me.
Planning and zoning, zoning, excuse me. Planning and zoning is also for the months of March and April. For the month of March, the building department, $2,555, wait, no, that's not right, that's 2,555. But there was CO searches for 1,600, building permits for 975, certificates of occupancy for 100, copies for $1.61, and violation fees for $275. The planning board has sought a signed application fee for 75, a site plan application fee for 900, and a special permit application fee for 300. For March. April, building department had search, CO searches for $300, building permits for 233365, certificate of occupancy, there was two for 100, fire inspections, 300 for building. For planning, signed application fee was 75, and copies for 1275. And then in addition to that, we received $2,000 in parking in Louisville for 54 East Market Street. Any questions on planning and zoning?
We also had a request to, for the village to approve the lot line merger over at Everetti? Where was that wired?
Someone have that?
That's correspondence.
In correspondence. Oh, okay. Highway Department.
Okay.
Oh, wait, excuse me. The letter, so we have a letter to say, you said for Everetti and the correspondence, or that's further back that? I know it's in here somewhere.
The letter regarding, the letter of consent, we don't have an actual letter, but we have the request to write the letter of consent.
Yes.
And that's in the correspondence part.
So we, I can read it, I found it. So I think this is the second time this has come through. It actually went through a year ago, but Brian Watts with the MA Day Engineering came before the board, requesting, representing the applicant, and to renew the previously approved plans for last year that had expired. And this is for the Everetti diner, just to focus on that. And the Everetti diner, most of that is in the town, but a portion of that is in the village at the parking lot, and out of appreciation, they come to us for approval for that. An motion was made by the planning board to approve the portion of the site plan that is in the village of Rhinebeck, which included lighting of no more than 12 feet in height to the Everetti diner located at 6595 on Route 9. Under conditions, a rear access connection to the parking lot will be constructed with an agreement that can be made with the adjacent neighbor, shown on the plans that are included in this copy. So this is for the letter of consent for the gift to the town to approve the Everetti diner. And motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, Carrie, thank you. We also, for the zoning board, Brent has, Brent was on the committee for the revision code, and also as an alternate for the zoning board of appeals. In his new responsibility as board of trustee, he will be leaving the zoning board of appeals to serve as a trustee. We needed an alternate replacement for that. I currently have two alternates that fill in and athletee's for that coverage, and I would like to appoint Josh Paulver, who we, who I interviewed, and also was interviewed by the ZVA, and has been approved by the ZVA for appointment as an alternate. Josh lives in the village of Rhinebeck, and he has three children, lives in our local school district. He has a history of long public service with the community, and so does his family. His father happened to be a judge up in Catskill. He has an architectural practice that he does in Manhattan, he doesn't practice in, in the village of Reinbeck. And he, he worked with both in the design and the construction fields. He's a military high school graduate and then went on to Rhode Island School of Design. He's a very logical person, he'd be a great in addition as an alternate to our, to our ZVA to assist us during the advocacy, so I'd like a motion, I'd like to make a motion to approve Josh Paulver to, as an alternate for zoning board of appeals.
Second.
Second.
Any opposed? All in favor? Excuse me, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Josh Paulver couldn't make it tonight, but we'll reach out to him and let him know that he's now officially the alternate, an alternate to replace Brandt on the zoning board of appeals.
I think it would be good enough that the minutes reflected that I have officially resigned from the ZVA, because I can't do this.
Good point.
And I wanted to talk about the zoning commission.
Yes, go ahead.
So we had that draft on the table. The controversial stuff seemed to be the farm animal issue, primrose school and the changes to the bed and breakfast, but I think we could move forward on the draft without those portions and maybe perhaps adopt the revisions to the zoning code. It's something we've been working on for several years now.
And I, I kind of thought that was the plan, that we were going to move forward based on pulling those things out based on a meeting that was held several, or a meeting several months ago.
Right.
But the question is, there was, I thought the board was going to go back and make revisions to the, update the revisions.
So we had, the commission is met and we made some, a few revisions and we could present a draft to this group. I'm wearing my commission hat right now, but as a commission member, we could present another draft to this group that would not have those, or those sections in it and it could be adopted that way until that other, those other two issues are resolved.
What about the issue of noise, was that spoken about?
We changed the decibel to make it more flexible. That was another hot potato, but we did try, we did address that. You haven't seen it yet, I don't think you've seen it.
We have not seen it. We have not seen it.
No, but you know, that would be, well, the original draft was sent to Rich, I believe, right? So, I mean, I could notify the commission, we could present another draft, Rich could review the, the most recent revisions and then we could vote on that. Sands, those other two.
Without, without. Can we do that? Are we, can we do that? We had a public hearing on, on the, on the code revision.
We continued it, we didn't.
We didn't close the public hearing.
So you could continue the public hearing with the revisions?
Right. That, which means we need to call a public hearing to do that.
It could be at our next scheduled board meeting or?
Yeah.
Could be a special meeting because it's kind of important.
I think it is, I would like, I think we all would like to move forward on the revisions that were done, we can do that. So why don't we schedule that for next month and have, and bring it in?
Might not have enough time if we go to a regular board meeting, that's what you're trying to say, right?
Maybe perhaps.
Because there's a lot, a lot of different things that might come up.
Well, were there any discussions on the other stuff if we, if we're pulling out the Reinbeck? And so the only other would be the noise, right?
So there were several.
I'm only interested in the hot potatoes, but I would like to suggest though that there was a lot of interest in, that, that there should be a public hearing on the revisions and that there may be significant, even though you've pulled out the, the B and Bs and the farm animals, there still may be discussion.
I also commented at the last public hearing about the two-family law.
Yes.
And since then, I've discovered another two-family controversy in the village that's ongoing right now, so I'd like to see the zoning commission take a look, take another look at that and see if that, that section of the law should be re-looked at. Because right now, two-family can be, one family can be converted by, I think, a variance within the village almost anywhere.
It's a special use for it, it's not even a big use for it.
Right.
I think we're agreeing that we need to do a public hearing. I think the question is, should we do the public hearing separate or in conjunction?
I think we should do it separately.
Yeah, I think we should do it separately.
All right, so we can set a date?
I didn't bring a calendar.
Yeah.
We can set a date and just publish it within so many days.
Okay.
We can set it up.
All right, so.
Yeah, I don't have the calendar. I would make time for, I mean, if it were a Thursday.
We should talk to the ZVA to set the date, so we don't want to send blindly without them.
The calendar from building this downstairs, so.
Okay. Everybody okay with that, we'll set a date and then?
Yeah, approximately four weeks from now or?
Well, our next meeting is in four weeks, so.
Two or three weeks from now?
All right, well, let's set, let's work on, let's try to set a date before our meeting.
Okay.
And on outside.
Because we've worked several years on that and that, the group that was convened in two thousand and seven, worked a couple of years on it, it's been going on for over.
No, it's a good idea, let's, let's try to close, move on on it. Thank you Brandt.
Would the members of that commission be part of the hearing as well, will they be here to answer questions?
Yes. They were, they were the ones that are present, there are some that are away right now, but the alternates and the others will be present for that. Anything else, or on zoning? Highway department.
Okay. Highway department was busy during April, cleaning up from the winter. There were road repairs, cold patch of potholes and repair of even damage. Catch basins were repaired and cleaned, brush removal after storms, brush was removed after storms, the start of stump grinding, deliveries of mulch, sign repairs and spring cleanup were all undertaken by the guys in the, in the department. In addition, on April fourteenth, a meeting was held with the Reinbeck Town Highway Department and attending were Barry Sherrod and Town Foreman Bob Lyon and Superintendent here, John Fenton was here, Mike Wolf and myself attended. And basically, at that meeting, we developed a plan to pave Astor Drive and Montgomery Street and that work will begin in July and should end in August. Basically, at the meeting, the departments agreed on their respective roles, who would be doing what. The planning curve includes milling and repaving Montgomery Street, repaving Astor Drive, improving the drainage, curving, aproning along the streets. Superintendent Fenton and I have a meeting with Northern Duchess Hospital, who we are working with to maybe make some sidewalk and additional curb improvements because they have their, their contractor in to do that. The total cost of the paving project is projected at about a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We have a total of approximately a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars available to us in state aid. And we are hoping, as part of the discussion, it developed that there is some new techniques for doing subsurface prior to paving and that may allow us to save on asphalt. So hopefully, we'll be on the lower end of that, of that number. The town is also repaving Mill Street and there's a little stub end of, of Mill that is in the village, so that's going to be repaved as also sometime this summer. We'll be installing risers on the stores there, stores there. I talked to John Fenton today. We would like to get the streets, the village streets swept before the Memorial Day Parade. We have two options at basically the same price. The village can rent the town sweeper for seven hundred dollars a day, that's a machine and an operator, and we received another bid from a private contractor at the same rate. So we're going to make a decision based upon availability. Superintendent Fenton is checking with Barry Sherrod about that. It's estimated it'll take three days to sweep the village. Also, on May fourth, Superintendent Fenton, Trustee Trout, myself, went up to the Red Hook Village Highway Department and we met with the supervisor there and we discussed any opportunities for shared equipment and best practices in terms of leaf pickup, snow plowing and ongoing maintenance. The possibility for sharing a vacuum truck for leaf pickup or a truck capable of cleaning sores was discussed, but at least with the village of Red Hook, that didn't seem particularly feasible. However, the town of Hyde Park has contacted us about the possibility of obtaining a shared services grant for a multipurpose sewer, catch basin, hydro, excavating truck. It's a big ticket item, we have to look into that. And earlier today, there was a meeting with Superintendent Fenton, myself, Mike and Scott, and we sat down and started to create a capital plan for the department. And tomorrow, a meeting is planned with the county and the town to discuss moving forward on a shared highway services grant. This was put in, in place last year and basically, the nature of this grant is that we can get money to hire somebody to study how we can share services in the highway departments between the town and the village. That's it.
Thank you. So.
Any trees?
Question?
Sure.
For paving of Astor, Montgomery, what is the next step?
The next steps is that John is going out and getting bids for the subsurfacing and the milling of, of Montgomery. And so then we'll have the handle on what that number looks like. Then we'll be getting numbers from Barry about what the paving numbers look like. There's a few other, fair to call them incidentals, but there's some things like risers that have to be attached to sores and also some talk of putting some apriting up along the southwest side of Montgomery where the sidewalk's a little high and the road's a little low and it's just kind of scoured out over there. So there's a little dressing and things to do. It's going to take a solid month or so of inconvenience, probably from the time that we start to dig at the streets, to dig up the problems before there's a nice new surface on there, so I hope people will, will appreciate it when it's done. I should also mention that the last of the village brush pickups ends as of May fifteenth and between May fifteenth and Memorial Day, there are no more brush pickups. That's when we'll be sweeping the street, so I'd ask that residents stop putting their leaves and brush out on the streets. Pickup will reserve, resume on the Ever, the bi-weekly schedule throughout the summer and returns to daily pickup in October. So I just want to make sure people understand that, that shouldn't put out brush after the fifteenth, because we want to keep the village looking good for the parade.
Are we putting this on the website? Brush pickup?
It is, it already is, okay. It's not, you have to, down in the lower left-hand corner, but you can find it. But it's the, okay.
Can I just mention one thing?
Sure.
Shouldn't we go out to bid for this paving project?
Well, if we go, if we use the, the town, we do not have to go out to bid because we relate to the municipal shared services.
Municipal rate.
Well, that's not what I was told a few years ago when we did Asher Road about three years ago.
Okay.
We had to get three bids and Bobby White was like, he said, when he saw the bids, he said, "Go with this other guy, I can't do it for that price."
Okay, well, we, I will check.
I'm just checking on the gallons.
Is that including labor, that price, or is that just a material price?
For which one?
Your total.
I haven't got, I haven't given you a price, that was just an estimate on the total cost of the job.
And they're charging for?
They're charging for their total materials and equipment.
I'm all for shared services, but, you know, even Bobby White said, "No, take this other guy." He, he said, "You can land an airplane on what they want to do on this road." He said, "I can't touch that price."
Well, we.
Quality of work, he said.
Well, at least in the, in the meeting, as we discussed how things were going to be done, both John Fenton and Mike Wolf seemed that, that we had a reasonable, seemed that they were, they had a reasonable plan in place and I will check on the necessity of putting out for bids.
Yeah, I, I also thought that if we went with the municipal rate, that was pretty much a, a true low rate that.
Well, I mean, it didn't happen in the past, so I don't know.
Okay.
And that was from Bobby White, wasn't from me, wasn't from anybody else.
Gotcha.
He said, "No, I can't touch it for that rate, go ahead, hire this other guy."
Okay. Okay, let's certainly take a look.
When we did the parking lot out back, was that put out for bid as well?
Out here?
Yeah.
No, I don't think it was.
So we went with the town?
Right.
Bid for the park, to do the parking?
I don't think they gave us a bid, I think we just, just did it.
Okay. Well, it had to be costs associated with it.
Well, there's a cost, but I think they gave us the cost after it was done.
Oh.
Well, I will follow up on that.
Okay, so what, another question. Shared services, there's a special shared services, not the IMA for a shared highway service, that we're, that you're working on. But on May nineteenth is, the county has issued a, one of any shared services grants put into, applications for grants put in by May nineteenth, which would include if the town of Hyde, town of Hyde Park, if we were going to do that. So we need to respond to that prior to May nineteenth if we want to participate that. There was also EMS grants associated with that, if, if we have any. I know I forwarded that information to the fire department to see if they, Kyle just left, so I haven't heard back if they want any grants for, you know, for pursuing that activity. But we should follow up with the fire department from an EMS point of view and for any shared service, because the deadline is May nineteenth.
Okay, tick tock.
For shared services, for, for those special set of shared services that is going on. Thank you. Um, I guess one more, the shared services that we're going to discuss on Tuesday, that has been reviewed by our lawyer, correct? And we have comments associated from, from our lawyer.
Yes.
Yeah, there, there.
On the Wednesday.
Yeah, so we're ready to talk, you know, in terms of what, and try to get an agreement if we can.
Finalized, yeah.
To finalize the agreement. Great. Thank you Rick.
Okay. Want to push on to trees?
Well, the next thing was, is the water department, the trees will come back. Brandt, you want to do the water?
Yeah, bear with me, I'm new. For April, the water, eleven million eight hundred and fifty-six thousand gallons were treated, eleven million thirty-four thousand gallons previous month. In the distribution center or system, seven new radios to read meters were installed. Hydro, hydrant was replaced at twenty-six Kelly Street and I guess there's been a decision made with the town for the master meter at the Thompson Mazzarella Park, that there's a check valve that's been installed that appears to be adequate instead of having a backflow preventer. So there was also a meeting with the Department of Transportation for the water project on Route Nine and I did sit in on that, it was just a couple of days ago. I was, and help, if you want to say something here, that's fine, but I'll just say a couple of the summaries that I came up with, that it's best to install the water meter in the southbound lane. We're requesting from the Board of Health that we have a setback about six feet from the storm drains instead of ten, which is.
Correct.
Which is the, what's in the requirements and basically, there's a verbal approval from New York Department of Transportation for the project. That was my take on it.
So I would like to just summarize that a little bit, because the issue was, we've been since December trying to get the DOT to come to the table. Part of the condition of getting a plan approved for the Route Nine water infrastructure project was getting your approval, because we're going to be taking up a lot of the Route Nine road surface to do that as well, you know, which is their primary concern. And it's valid because what they don't want is a disruption of traffic for service and everything and also, at the end project, they want a nice, and we want as well, a nice smooth paved surface. So there were conditions that they wanted to put on us to do that. They thought it would be better if we were not to use Route Nine as our trench path for the watering project, but that we actually go over into the sidewalk and dig up along a sidewalk closer to that, closer to the houses to be able to plant our pipes, correct? And as our engineers reviewed that, there was really no cost savings by coming off the street versus going into the sidewalk. And in fact, if we went into the sidewalk, there was an issue because of, if you're doing, what was it?
Like soil boring.
Soil boring. To, to a lot of the historic homes and their foundations, it would have disrupted the foundations and actually could have been more disruptive.
It's like seismic activity.
With seismic activity. So it took us three months. So, it took us three months of diligent work by everybody to get the DOT to come to the table. But when they did, it was, it was pretty much approved as we had suggested. So, it was, it was nice.
And they said that they would approve conceptually the drawings because we are pursuing grant funding. There's a ton of money that was released in the New York State budget, the general water, water infrastructure improvement grants. And there's an application that's due the third week in June. Parallel to that, John Fenton and I are going to an Environmental Facilities Corp workshop to see how to get some grant money at the La Grange Town Hall in the middle of this month. And that Serino's is gonna do a presentation on that and do the assistant, you know, instructing us on how to submit for some public monies, monies for that. So we're doing everything we can to get some public funding for this.
So it's also good to note that, you know, this project, even though we wanted to do it in 2017, and it's still, it's still objective to get it done in 2017. But these delays are further impacting our ability to maybe complete it all in 2017 due to you have to leave, after trenching is done, let everything settle out, and then come back into the paving. So that schedule is being addressed by our engineers to see if we can complete the project in 2017 as we had wanted to because construction, we actually wanted to get into the construction phase by, in May, which is this month. And it's highly unlikely that we're gonna make that since we're not even out to bid yet, so, or have those approved. So, for the board's information, this project is moving forward, and we'll hopefully start construction yet.
It's good that we're virtually shovel-ready too because if we're in the queue for, for public funding and we're all ready to go and we have full-blown drawings and plans, then that could put us in good stead with that.
Yeah, I attended the, uh, NICOM, which is the New York Conference of Mayors, boot count for new officials, newly elected officials. And they were talking about that they would be, as soon as they have information about that state, I think it's two and a half billion dollars.
It is, two point five billion.
And that the state had not, at least this was about three weeks ago, the state had not yet put together their criteria and how they were gonna judge and all that stuff. But they said that they would try to be helping municipalities as soon as that information was coming out. So, they may be a resource there.
So, did they say ten feet from stormwater?
That's the code, but we're gonna try to get six. So basically, that whole south lane, southbound lane is gonna be chewed out.
Because that's what the stormwater drains are, the southbound.
Yeah. So six feet off of that is what we're...
Which way to go more, towards the middle of the road?
Yeah, pushes, no.
No, we're gonna be two feet off the curb.
Is that, is that where six feet we put us?
Yeah, we're gonna be two feet off the curb line, which then, part of that means then, because we have to have so much paving to cover our trench path that overlap, so we have to be able to cover eight feet on each side of...
So that's gonna go really close to the middle of the lane.
So if we stay two feet off the curb, it puts us right into the middle of the road for the curb, for the repaving project versus having to repave the whole road.
So one lane would be closed, so it's going more towards the middle of the road.
No, it's two feet off the curb.
Well, that's where the storm drains are, two feet off the curb.
But they're on the opposite side of where we are.
The southbound lane, you're saying Route nine's southbound, right? Is that what we're saying, Route nine, southbound?
Right. We're on the north, the water line is on the, is on the north side. It's closer to this side.
And the storm drains are on the southbound lane, right, two feet from the curb.
Yeah, but we're on the opposite side of the storm drains. So I think so. I mean, I could be wrong, but that's what I seem to remember. We should check.
Yeah.
Let's check and make sure. But the engineers have us all dialed in to where we should be. And the biggest concern was making sure that we can stay within half of the lane with, to be able to reduce our paving costs and not have to pave the whole road because of the overlap of paving.
Right. Yeah, we should look at this.
I'm just sorry, I can't quote from, from what they did.
Yeah, you can.
We have the plans too, Howie, in the, here in the office, so you can look at the very detailed plans at any time.
I don't know where the water lines are, lines are. I know where the stormwater lines are.
Yeah, they're all dialed in.
Yeah.
By the engineering team.
So, I also need approval for the, this actuator, which regulates the flow and the sand filter. They can manually manipulate it now, but due to the higher water use when the weather gets warmer, we really need to get this actuator installed again. And we got three bids, one from Custer, one from Technical Components, and one from Precision Pneumatic. We prefer the Custer bid. It's four thousand eight hundred seventy-nine dollars for the actuator and nine hundred seventy dollars for labor to install. They, this is a preferred bid also because they've been out and looked at it. And it's, this is exactly, they produced exactly what we need. And there was a service call of two hundred ninety-six dollars, which is gonna be a credit toward the labor cost of nine hundred seventy dollars. So I propose that we approve the Custer bid for the actuator at the water plant. It's four thousand eight hundred seventy-nine dollars for the actuator and nine hundred seventy-nine dollars for the install.
For a total of six one four five?
For a total of six one four five.
The other companies didn't even bid on the installation, did they?
They didn't, but...
Because Technical Components said installation is by others.
Right.
So, they only, they only, they only bid on a...
And the other one, they didn't include the install bid.
Correct.
So, but the material cost was actually cheaper for Custer anyway.
Second. You made a motion, right?
I make a motion, too.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thanks, Brent.
And then the other thing was, we wanted to approve those benchmarks for the... The ManTech contract, which would amend the contract to allow for the payment of twenty-two thousand dollars for construction documents, ten thousand dollars for additional construction documents for Livingston, Chiswick, Platt, and forty-eight hundred dollars to assist with the bidding. These are pay points that they have not yet hit, never achieved. But this is the kind of scope of work we're gonna be required to move forward in the next couple of months with this plumbing project on Route nine.
So in essence, we're authorizing them to continue with that, correct?
Yes, continue with it. It's a revision to the original contract for those new pay points.
How much did they go up?
What's that?
How much did they go up?
Well, I don't know the history of the single. They didn't, it wasn't included, right, Gary? Was it not? It wasn't included in the original contract, right?
Um, the first eight points were...
Were, so this is not, were...
These are in the condition, the rest of the conditions of meaning to the final, instead of going out to bid plans.
Right.
Which we approved, but we have to approve the expenditure. We have to approve them to be able to continue with that to make the expenditure so that they can bill us.
So I moved if we do that to the two hundred forty-three thousand, three hundred dollars.
I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Howie? Waste water?
Waste water.
Brent, you're familiar with this?
Yes, I am.
Okay, for, for the month of April, four point seven million gallons of wastewater was treated. That compares with four point two million gallons treated in March. Gallons of sludge processed was thirty-three thousand one hundred gallons, and that compares with forty thousand six hundred in March. And pounds of sludge processed was four thousand one hundred eighty-six pounds, which compares to five thousand six hundred nine pounds in March. Everything seems to be running okay. The wastewater department, I just want to note that Gary and I and Pete Rathkins, head of the wastewater department, John Fenton, and our engineer, we all met to try to get this, they got a study going to nail down how much capacity that this wastewater department has. And they are finishing the study.
So, at the end of the discussion, we were, part of the meeting, though, was focused on, do we execute the full contract as it was done two years ago or do we stop now, right?
Well, we stop now.
Is that what your recommendation is? That we're gonna stop based on the expenditures and that, and with the information we have? Or they, we're gonna let them continue through them? Because there's an additional four thousand dollars for them to continue.
Right, well, I didn't get back to Pete, but I thought that you had said we should stop now.
No, I, that was a question. It was, I didn't say it was a question. Of what we should do.
I'll get back to Pete and see if we can, I need to have it.
I think it was, I asked you to come in with a recommendation.
Right, as long as they, as long as they give us the report of our capacity. Pete was happy with that.
This is in respect to the expansion of gardens?
No.
Okay.
No.
This was like an inventory of our wastewater plant, our equipment, suggestions, I don't have the paper with me. I should have brought it. But, suggestions on different areas which could be improved. And maintaining was our capacity, to see what our capacity was.
We did a quick capacity audit when the hospital connected. As I requested, Anthony and I requested that they do a capacity analysis, so we did.
The hospital did, or...
They paid for it, but we did it with the group of, Brenier and Larios did it. So it's in the files somewhere. But just, if you have two of them, that's great.
Yeah.
I mean, I, that's what it's basically saying. Our capacity per day is two hundred and sixty thousand gallons per day. And we have two basically processing treatment sections there. Each are rated a hundred and thirty thousand gallons a day.
Right.
But we're not exceeding a hundred, we're not exceeding the two hundred and sixty thousand, so we still have, you know, room to grow right now based on our rat. But we're approaching that margin.
I think we are. They concluded we're somewhere around eighty-five percent.
Yeah, but, so we should, we should dig that one up here.
Process if you can use it, maybe more efficient. I don't know how it works.
We'll look for that report.
Yeah, so Howie, you're gonna come back. Because basically, the contract as it was put in place in 2015 was for like twenty thousand dollars back in 2015. And now, it's been delayed for two years. The contract price went up to a little over twenty-one thousand dollars because of delays and then the restarting. So that twenty-one thou, so it's actually increased if we want them to continue building it.
Right.
And we've already, basically, haven't been built for, but the engineers have expended, what, seventeen thousand dollars?
Seventeen thousand, yeah.
Seventeen thousand already, so, in their study. So I guess we, we need to make a decision, right? You need to make a decision, let us know.
Right.
Cool. Anything else on wastewater, Howie?
No.
Tree committee?
Okay. This is prepared with the help of the tree committee. So Tom Johnson, who is a member of our highway department, has also been appointed to the tree committee. At the last Village Board meeting, Tom was provisionally appointed pending an inquiry into any potential ethics conflicts. And Mayor Bassett contacted the village attorneys and NICOM, and I spoke to NICOM, and they reported back that there aren't, they see no potential conflicts. So with that, Tom is now a member of the committee, and it's something that he really enjoys and is very important to him. So we're happy to see him join the committee. On Saturday, April twenty-ninth, twelve trees were planted throughout the village. And I'm going to read everybody's name because they all deserve a thank you. Gary Bassett, Nakita Chass, Walter Cotter, Dodd and Dorothy Crane, Meg Crawford, Maggie Donan, Gina Fox, Paul Higgins, Thomas Johnson, Anthony and Jack Larson, excuse me, Adriana Leachow, Connie Loon, Nick Monaco, Raphael O'Connor, Adelina Romero, Christopher Tavener, Joel Tyner, and Jill Welch, all participated. And the bagel store, Bagel Shop, excuse me, was very nice, very nice to provide breakfast and refreshments for all the people who volunteered. And so I do want to say thank you to the Bagel Shop as well. In terms of other tree committee news, Isabel Schulte, Schulte, who is not a member of the committee but is assisting the committee, is looking into procedures and the potential software for taking a new tree inventory around the village. The last inventory was about, was seven years ago. We have a program now where the village can place a tree beyond the right-of-way of the village, basically on a homeowner's property. And the agreement is that we plant the tree, we tend it for five years, and then it becomes a homeowner's property. And we do it for the first five years so we see that it grows. Unfortunately, it seems like the paperwork for this is kind of unerous. It started out with a simple agreement, but now we've had to use something that New York TP five eighty-four, which is a four-page real estate transfer tax return. And it's basically a real turnoff to anybody doing it. And as I was looking at it, the trees are about a hundred dollars. By reading the form, shows the tax rate is two dollars per five hundred dollars in conveyed value, so we're talking about forty cents in taxes here. So, we'll have to look at some ways to reduce the paperwork so that more people can participate in this program. It's a very worthy program, and we should do what we can to reduce paperwork. I have two resolutions to be made. At the April meeting, the tree committee unanimously approved a request of homeowners at Five Kramer Road to remove two trees in front of our house in the right-of-way. Both trees have considerable damage to their canopy, particularly the one next to the driveway. The second tree is less dyed back, but is in close proximity to nearby healthy trees. The committee suggests removal to decrease competition with nearby trees. Removal is at the homeowner's expense. There's a bunch here, just one at a time.
We'll read them both because they're applications.
And then the homeowners at Fifty Livingston Street requested permission to prune a maple tree in front of their house. The committee approved their request with the provisions that the homeowner, homeowner, excuse me, that the homeowner be reminded that pruning is at their expense. And the committee also recommended that some of the upper limbs of the tree that extend over the house be pruned as well to keep the tree in balance. And those were the two resolutions that we had.
So we have tree removal permit, pruning permit applications on file.
Right.
So the first, you want, you want to do Fifty Livingston Street, which is the pruning?
Sure. So, okay. What's the, what's the language of the, of the motion or of the resolution? Do we accept or approve, or what are we doing?
Make a, make a motion that we allow Fifty Livingston Street to prune her tree.
As a request was submitted or something.
Okay, all right. Well, I, I will make a recommendation that we follow the recommendation of the tree committee, that the homeowners of Fifty Livingston Street be allowed to prune their maple tree in front of their house. What's that?
Second?
Sorry.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
All right, and then I'd like to make a resolution that with the approval of the tree committee, that the homeowners at Five Kramer Road have the ability to remove the two trees in front of their house that are both in the right-of-way.
Second?
Have you looked at it? Oh. So go ahead, second, seconded.
Yeah, second, yeah.
Discussion, I'd like to, so have you, anybody looked at this tree? Physic, I mean, on the board?
Usually I do, but I didn't...
This was actually holding over from the blast.
Yeah, was it really?
Yeah, yeah, so...
By the Kramer's?
The Kramer's been holding out for a while, so. And it was pretty evident that we should get it done.
Well, the homeowners are paying for it, right?
Yeah.
And the committee, or the committee recommended it.
Committee, yeah, committee recommended it.
Have you, have you seen them?
I have not looked at, at the Kramer trees. I know, I know the Fifty Livingston tree.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, Carrie? The power line committee is, is gonna be on hiatus for a while. The next step for the power line committee would be to pursue getting a design, basically from either a vendor or from central Hudson of what it would take. And that would be anywhere from the cost of eight to 10,000 dollars to get that work done, so that work has not been approved. So the Power Line Committee is basically on hold until sometime we want to regenerate, come back to discussion in terms of redoing it. So that would be it for the Power Line Committee. Special requests. The first. Is everybody aware that this is Municipal Clerks Week? It's in recognition of all the clerks that are working here in our village office. So from May 7th to May 13th of 2017, proclamation for Municipal Clerks Week. Whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local governance, exists throughout the world. And whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local government bodies, the agencies of government, and other levels. And whereas, whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality, impartiality, and ready to equal service to all. Whereas municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and the community. And whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve administration of the affairs of the Office of the Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas it is most appropriate, most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishment, accomplishments of the Office of the Municipal Clerk. Now therefore, I, Gary Bassett, mayor of the village of Rhinebeck, do recognize the week of May 7th through May 13th, 2017, as Municipal Clerks Week. And further stand our appreciation to our municipal clerk, Patricia Coon, and all, and all other clerks in the village of Rhinebeck for their vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Day did today, May 9th, 2017. For everybody in the community that has been to our office, I know that our, the clerks are just, you know, go out of their way to make sure everybody gets everything that they need. And so it's a vital function of everything we do, and it's great to have Pat and others here to help support that. So thank you, Pat.
You're welcome. On behalf of Karen, Karen, Tricia, Chrissy, and I, thank you. Because they really appreciate this little bit of, of recognition, it's nice, thank you.
They deserve it. All right, village special request forms, next. Montgomery Post number 429, on behalf of the organization, what's your organization here?
The American Legion Post 429.
Eight, Montgomery Agency Post 429, Wayne Gay, 201 Ryancliffe Road, Rhinebeck, New York. Wants to do a coin drop on September 8th, 9th, and 10th, 2017, East Marcus Street and Route 9, from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
This is the same annual coin drop thing?
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve the request for a coin drop from the American Legion?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry. This is just more of a notification, the next one is from the Shepherd's, Shepherd's Knitters, who are taking part in a worldwide knit in public day on Saturday, June 10th. They've done this in the past, and they'll be setting up on, on Marcus Street, knitting and sharing their expertise with others. It's been interesting to hear the positive comments and recollection shared by people that have passed by watching these knitters. So on June 10th, this is really just, they'll be sitting using the public access with the sidewalk. They, they won't be, they will be located for the most part in the extended sidewalk area in front of CVS, where they won't interfere with pedestrian traffic, and there'll probably be a dozen of them there knitting, you know, for that time, which is pretty bad.
Pat, Pat's involved with this?
Yeah, I'm there.
Yeah, so both CVS and Sergeant Peter Dunn have been informed of these plans and have no objections. And as well, the village clerk, our Pat will be contacted if you have any questions or concerns.
I move, do we approve it?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. And the next one is an event application by the Rhinebeck Area Chamber of Commerce, submitted by Claudia Cooley. And this is for the annual sidewalk sale to be held. There's actually two events, the spring and summer sidewalk sales, May 19th to the 21st. And the rain date is May 26th to the 28th, for the, for the spring one. August 18th for the, for the summer one, and the rain date is September 25th to the 27th. August 18th to the 20th, or the rain date, September 25th to 27th for the summer. I make a motion, we approve the annual sidewalk sale, submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. The second one by the Rhinebeck Area Chamber of Commerce, submitted by Claudia Cooley, also is for. So, Pat, this one says Rhinebeck Annual Spring Sidewalk Sale. Is this the same thing?
Yeah, you must have it in the twice.
Pardon?
It's the same thing.
It's the same thing, all right, so that was, sorry, that's a duplicate. It's a continuation of the application, thank you. And they have the certificate of liability of insurance and everything attached. So next is special request form, please note Central Hudson license application number is not filled in. What is this one for, Pat? I'm sorry.
It's the Rhinebeck Central School for their banners.
Oh, the banners, further on, yes. Rhinebeck Central School District applying for permit on behalf of the, of the Rhinebeck Central School District to put banners on the utility poles. And I think there's four poles?
Correct.
Four poles in total, yes, number of poles requested is four and approved by Central Hudson. So I think we've done this in the past.
Yes, for the graduating class, right?
Yes, for the graduating class. If I make a motion, we approve the Rhinebeck Central School District placing banners for graduation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Lot here. Village, another special request, this is under the category of other for community police event. By Tom Trout. Tom, welcome. Would you like to speak about this?
Sure, it'd be nice. So, thank you very much. Couple of years ago, 1013 Foundation asked me to put together a community police event. Basically, a showcase for law enforcement to get together with the community to sort of, rather than see the police drive by, people can walk up and, and meet the police officers. And the police, police departments also have an opportunity to, you know, showcase their service and showcase their equipment. There's a number of things, it's not, first of all, it's not a fundraiser, it's just basically a public service event. So we have activities that could be a K-9 demo, a bike rodeo for children, a bike raffle for children. Maybe a crime scene vehicle would come and show the, the crime lab, mobile crime lab, hands-on type stuff. Basically, it's a, an opportunity to meet your local law enforcement, including the state police and the sheriff's office. And last time they all were involved, and it was actually a feature story in Time Warner Cable that day, so. So anyways, we, I had it in the fall of 2015, we were going to have it last fall, however. It seems that the fall is pretty popular for events in Rhinebeck, there's now a lot of, well, a few marathons or whatever, running events or whatever it is. But, so the spring is a good opportunity, plus with the bike raffle, we can get that bike door in the spring for the summer rather than, you know, throwing it off season, so. Anyways, because there's a new owner of the property, which we have it on, which is Foster's parking lot, I'm kind of sifting my way through some obstacles with new attorneys and so on. So this is kind of pending, however, once we get through that red tape, I'll move forward with the PDs and get it all lined up. So it's for June 3rd, it's only for a few hours, typically 9:30 to 2:00 latest, and then we clear out, so. Any questions?
Village police included?
Those police, yeah, they were a big, a big part of the event, actually showed up with the majority of the demos, so.
Perfect.
They do a great job, actually, I brought this up with Pete first. And the third was the best date because it was the less, least impact on the PD.
Good, thank you.
That weekend, the 10th would be the alternate date for it, for where to have it, so, that's okay.
So this is in the, just in the parking lot there?
Yeah, in the parking lot, we were going the street. Hello, we did have the K-9 walk down the street a little bit, did a demo down towards CBS Park a lot, just for show. It kind of coincided that time with a, with the bookstore event, with the K-9 type books, so. But, you know, pretty passive event, basically. Everybody had something going on, the state police had a fingerprint thing for kids, you know, we had a marine event for the sheriff's office, and then the PD had probably three cars there, so, well attended.
Okay.
Good.
So I move that we approve the request in the alternate date also, if they need it?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Thank you, Tommy.
Thank you.
I hope it was great, it was a nice day.
Yeah.
All right, so the last, the last special request submitted by Pat Coon. You have the. What? So just submitted by Pat, for Sunday, May 28th, dedication of the Gulf War plaque at the Doboy Veterans Memorial Park.
I make a motion?
Yeah.
To approve the dedication of the Gulf War plaque at the Veterans Memorial Park?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Time is from 12:30 to 1:30.
Can I just say a little something about?
Sure.
On it, my, my late husband had started the project, and in his honor and memory, along with the help of the American Legion Post, we collected money to pay for the plaque. So the plaque has been all paid for. It's going to have a ceremony at the, at the Doboy Park, which is right across the street at the municipal parking lot. The plaque will be on the, on the backside of the Vietnam Memorial. And I believe it's, correctly, it's 57 or 62, somewhere between that number, of Gulf War veterans that have served, that have come and lived in Rhinebeck. The American Legion Fire and Squad will be there, the executive director of Duchess County Veterans Affairs will be there, and Pastor Luis Perez from the Dutch Reform Church will say prayer. So all are welcome to come, it's a nice honor to recognize our veterans of Rhinebeck. And that park has become a kind of sacred ground, as all our veterans' names are there who have served in Rhinebeck. And I think all that have helped in seeing my husband's final wish come to fruition.
Very nice.
Thank you.
So now I'm looking for our environmental committee report here. Pat, what section is that in, I lost it in my book?
Duchess County Hazard Mitigation?
No, the next thing on the agenda is the, the formation of a joint village and town environmental committee.
I never had paperwork on that.
I can do this from, from memory. I had sent an email to the board talking about the formation of a joint environmental committee between the town, between the village of Rhinebeck and the town of Rhinebeck. For the purposes, and this would be a community committee focused on looking at environmental impacts that not only impact the village, the town, or both. An example of those was the ban on the barges, but now it's beyond banning the barges. It's also to look at issues that my sort of brings forward for community program Clean Energy Act, LED street lighting, which is a proposal, and there's 10 initiatives within there, which we could get a committee formed to be able to focus on these events, stay abreast of what's happening in our environment, and then bring recommendations back to the board for us to either act on or make decisions on, both either to the village, to the town both, or separately as they so may be, to be able to, to address them. So it'd be kind of like a, just a small committee. The town supervisor, Elizabeth Spindia, and myself have, have agreed to be the liaisons for this committee. And going forward and trying to build the committee and work towards, you know, providing a better environment for all of us in both the village and the town. So I'd like to ask that we look, we approve the formation of an environmental committee. The town is also going to do that at their next meeting and form this committee. I'd like to make a motion for the environmental committee for the village and town.
Second.
Any opposed?
So it's going to be one committee with, like you're saying, you guys are the liaison, you and Elizabeth, you and Elizabeth, she's not a guy, you know? So is it going to be combined, village and town residents?
Yes, it can be made up of both village and town residents that have volunteered to be on it, that's correct.
Okay.
Are you guys going to come up with a resolution that we could, you know, do in the scope? Like you and Elizabeth, or whoever gets started with it?
We could, yes, absolutely.
So we could vote on which.
So we can get the committee, actually, what I'd like to do is a committee to focus on providing that resolution of a charter, basically.
Right, yeah.
Yes.
So interested parties should send a letter of interest to the village clerk?
Yes. Thank you.
And, and how, how does this fall in the structure of our, this is basically an advisory committee? Is this, are we going to be appointing members, or is this going to be, is it informal and scary as well then?
I would call it an ad hoc committee, is the best way. They're not, they don't vote, they don't, but they can make recommendations to both boards to bring us up to speed on what's happening in the news in terms of our environment. It's somebody who basically will watch over.
Okay, so, so bring us information, alert us to things that are ongoing, okay. But they have no formal standing in the, they have no formal standing?
They have no formal standing, that's correct.
And they're going to focus on the barges too, right?
Yes, it's the continuation of that, because now there's an effort to have what they call restricted zones for parking in our barges as well, which is the next phase of that activity, which I would like to get some information on to bring to the board. So we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The consent for everybody.
That was what I was referring to earlier, I can't find it.
We did that, yeah, we went through that, that's on here. That's already carried. Yeah, we have that. Pat, now I'm looking for the ethics committee.
That should be following.
I don't have it.
I've got, I know on here.
Somebody have a copy of the ethics committee?
Yeah, I did.
Yes. It's, it's after this.
Oh, it's after the. Ah, I found it, thank you, thanks for that. So we previously put out an announcement for the ethics committee. Currently, the village of Rhinebeck does have an ethics committee that consists of three members. The existing members on the, on the committee were Sam Reifler and John Halpern, who have both served two full three-year terms on the, on the committee. And I would also like to read into the record a thank you letter to both Sam and to John. On behalf of the village of Rhinebeck, we want to express our great appreciation for your efforts and are very grateful for your service for your two terms on the ethics committee. And according to our village code, there's a term limit that a member of the ethics committee can only serve two, three, two consecutive three-year terms. Again, we thank you for your contributions, your time, your efforts through serving on this committee, and welcome you to stay involved with the, with the, with the village. Sincerely, Gary Bassett, copying to Pat Coon, Rick Lewitt, Howie Trout, and Brandon Nudhuker. So, so thank you for both Sam and to John for their service for the past six years. And what we did was then we asked for volunteers, and we, so far we have eight people who have volunteered to be on ethics committee. Gina Fox, Tammy Valentino, John Gill, Lisa Rubenstein, Lawrence Miller, Stephen Gross, who is a town resident, I believe can, will not be allowed because it's restricted to village residents only, Carol Urban, and Pamela Moore.
I'd like to add another one.
Yes.
Walter Cotter. Walter Cotter. He has, he wants, he has to fill out a form, or?
No, no, there's no form, just it was, it was basically letting Pat know, but you just did that.
Yeah.
And so Walter can be added to the list. I believe we had kind of discussed in ad hoc that both trustees, Lewitt and Trout would conduct interviews, correct? And make recommendations for the committee, so thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll email both of you their contact information. Do you want me to do that?
Yes, please.
Do you need to vote on that approval?
You don't have a candidate?
It's in the code book, so it's an ongoing, so we don't have any candidates.
Right, if you have candidates, send me what you have.
The next is the short-term vacation rental committee. This was a carryover from basically the code revision in terms of looking at both, you know, the unoccupied hosts. Brent, help me out here, move it a little step.
The vacation rental definition that the commission proposed to include would not allow people to rent their homes on a transient basis if they were not a host. So that would not be a bed and breakfast, and that would not be permitted. So that was a very controversial paragraph to add, the vacation rental paragraph, so.
So in response to that, and during, and to the response to the public hearing, it has been suggested by the planning board that we form a short-term vacation rental committee. This committee will focus on providing the recommendations to the village board on the issue of the short-term vacation rentals. It'll consist of a seven-member committee with one village trustee, two from the planning department, two from planning, one from zoning, and three community members that will represent the business district, and advocates for and against, that are specifically interested in the issue but have different perspectives. They will appoint their own chair to champion their efforts on the committee, and the committee will be charged to bring the recommendations back to the board within 60 days from being established. We have names of people who have been interested. There has been no selection except for from the planning committee. Both John Clark and Tim Decker have suggested they would like to participate in this committee and be part of it. And then from then, we need to pick zoning.
And Judy.
Judy Merritt?
Judy Merritt, indicated from, yeah, from the ZVA.
From the ZVA. And Ward is on here, and he's also the ZVA.
That's right.
So we have two prospective participants from the ZVA which need to be picked, and then three community members. So I'd like to make a motion that we set up a short-term vacation rental committee with the first focus of selecting participants for the committee to begin this discussion.
Who's doing the selection? Who's doing the committee selection?
Yes.
What if, um...
Well, second, second, alright, thank you.
So we're deciding which citizens will be on there?
Do you want to decide now?
Well, no, because we don't, you have ladies, you have names?
I like Donna Warner from the, she came up with a very cogent letter when...
She was here.
Yeah, she was here. She wrote a really good letter about this and did some research, and she's an intelligent person.
From what, so is Donna?
From the citizen, citizen person, citizen.
She'd be a community member, she'd be a community member, yeah.
Claudia Cooley, if we're gonna talk about Claudia Cooley from the Rybeck Chamber, from Rybeck Chamber would represent the business districts very well, so. But what we don't have is somebody from, I mean, the list of Kevin Curry, Gwen Barton, Jamie Diolio, Pamela Moore, are all from the same organization, or same group of people.
Same advocate, for the same, yeah.
Do you want to ask them to pick one of themselves?
Yeah, I think we need one, not, right.
I don't remember them, I mean, I took notes during that, but I don't, like, I wouldn't be prepared right now to talk about it.
So it says advocates for and against?
Right.
So you're picking one person for and one person against?
Well, with different perspectives.
Or is that, what about, they'd be different than community members?
No, no, they are the community members. They are from the community.
But it says three community members.
Yes, one would be from the business district.
Oh, okay.
And one would be, I would say, a short-term vacation advocate.
Okay.
And one would have a different perspective of that, just to kind of balance.
Yeah, so it's balanced, yeah.
Why don't we ask the Airbnb people to designate somebody who they want to be their representative to the group, yeah?
I can reach out to them.
So that would be Claudia and Donna, and then one of those other groups?
So Claudia, Donna, and then one more. One from the other, so. Now we need a liaison. Somebody to represent the board.
Well, I probably should, it would have been Scott, but I should probably do it because I'm on the commission?
You were.
I don't have a dog, I mean, I'm not gonna, I'm not supposed to have a position on this, right? I'm just supposed to be the liaison.
You're the liaison.
So that would make sense.
Right, right. Okay, thank you, Brent. So we have, Brent is a liaison. We have, who else we have? We have John Clark and Tim Decker from planning. What about from the ZVA would be Ward?
Or Judy Merritt.
Or Judy Merritt, Ward or Judy? We have both. We have to pick one.
Do you have to do it now?
I know, you know, we don't have to. I know they're both interested, so what? I could reach out and talk to them a couple minutes later.
Okay.
And I'll report back. And then we have Claudia from the business district, which we approved, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll reach out to the vacation group and also Ward and Judy.
Okay.
And have conversations and discuss and report back.
Okay. I just ask you, when you have your meetings, just put it on the calendar so that we know when the office is gonna move downstairs.
Yeah, I will.
And Brent, since you're gonna be liaison, I would like to include you in those discussions if I could with the others.
Okay, sure.
We have Hudson Valley Mental Health, but that, he wants to postpone till June, so totally moved. So rather than have a report on Hudson Valley Mental Health update, they're in the process of moving into their new location, which will be at the hospital, and they would like to come back in June to report on that.
Is that the, sorry, is that the entire space over there, or is that just one?
No, just a portion of that space.
A portion of that space?
Yes.
The space between the oak?
Yes, it's on the corner, 47 West Marcus Street, right. So that organization is moving into the hospital. There's a brick building on the hospital on Montgomery Street there.
But there are other tenants in that building as well?
There still are other tenants, I don't know the status of the other tenants.
And that building is owned by the county?
I don't know.
I don't think it's owned by the county.
Okay, that's supposed to be a long time ago.
No, it's privately, I think it's kind of privately owned, and it's like contracted agencies that operate out of there, kind of like non-for profits or something. Something like that.
Alright, so we have, Pat, in here, we have the Town of Rybeck Clean Borchgo Public Hearing on Money, May 1st, this is passed, this is done, on special use permit, so that's passed. Is this the correspondence, now? What else do we have to record?
Can I send the business, like, old new business?
The Greenway, no, Hazard.
Pardon?
The Greenway and the Hazard.
Hazard mitigation plan?
Yes.
And the Greenway amendments.
Alright, so the Greenway. So this was several months old, correct, the Greenway goals? And this is, we reviewed this with our attorney, and basically, what the attorney requested that we review, just discuss the goals of the Greenway and whether we want to adopt those goals. I'd like to read in part of the resolution. This is a draft resolution, which is, which amendments to the Greenway connections, which is a Greenway compact program and guides for Duchess County communities, and adding seven new Greenway guides. Whereas the Hudson River Valley Greenway Act of 1991 has a legislative goal of establishing of the Greenway compact, a process for voluntary cooperation among the communities of the Hudson River region. And whereas the village of Rybeck adopted the Greenway connections by local law and joined the Greenway compact on date TBD. Whereas the Greenway Act or the adoption of Greenway connections do not supersede or change the powers that the state has granted municipal governments under the New York Constitution, the municipal home rule law, or various municipal enabling acts. And whereas the local law adopting the Greenway connections contained a provision allowing subsequent amendments to the document by resolution of the local legislative body and... Whereas after multiple local presentations and public comments, the Hudson River Valley Greenway Communities Council has approved seven new Greenway guides to be included in the Greenway connections. Center for Green Spaces, Slower Streets, Safer Streets, Rural Roads, Building Bicycle Networks, Convenience Stores with Gas Pumps, Recycling and Wastewater, and Green Infrastructure. And whereas the Greenway guides are entirely optional in nature and to be considered only when local officials in discretionary decisions think they may be appropriate. And whereas, for the village board Rybeck as lead, or council as lead agency has completed review under the State Environmental Quality Review Act as a seeker, and has determined that these amendments to the Greenway connections will not have significant effect on the environment and therefore warrant a negative declaration under Article 8 of the State Environmental Conservation Law. And now therefore be resolved that the village of Rybeck is prepared to adopt, hereby adopts in the annex ECor negative declaration for the proposed action, and that the village of Rybeck approves and adopts amendments to the Greenway connections to include the seven new Greenway guides, which are the Center for Green Spaces, Slower Streets, Rural Roads, Building Bicycle Networks, Convenience Stores with Gas Pumps, Recycling, Wastewater, and Green Infrastructure. And there's an application process that needs to be completed as part of this, which is four or five pages to be filled out, which we don't have to do now, but could need to be completed in order to, if we want to adopt these, this draft resolution. So I make a motion to adapt the resolution for the Greenway connections and the Greenway compact program guides with their seven new Greenway guides, as proposed and approved by our attorney.
Second.
Discussion? Any discussion on it?
Is this binding on anything, or?
No.
There's all sorts of disclaimers in there that, it's like...
It basically says, part of that, it says, whereas the Greenway guides are only entirely optional in nature and to be considered only when local officials in discretionary decisions think they may be appropriate.
Okay, that leads our hands pretty quick. And our attorney has approved this.
And our attorney has reviewed this and said, he says, the village board needs to review the goals and determine if it wants to just adopt those goals. There's no objection to it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
So getting back to this Eveready thing, because there was two issues in Rich's email. The, we voted, the issue was whether we're gonna approve a consolidation deed that was filed with the county on February 1st. The Duchess County Clerk's Office has requested a letter of consent from the village stating they have no objection to the filing of the map. Consolidating those deeds on the Eveready person. I don't recall how our motion was, we talked about it earlier.
So the motion we made was that, which was the recommendation by the planning board, by both Tim Decker and John Clark, to approve the portion of the site plan that is in the village of Rybeck, including the lighting no more than 12-foot height to the Eveready diner, which is located on 5595 Route 9. And under the condition that a rear access connection to the parking lot be constructed when an agreement can be made with the adjacent neighborhood.
So we should add that we're approving the consolidation deed that was filed with the county on February 1st? It's a separate issue?
It's a separate issue, yes, I think so.
It's a letter of consent from the village, I don't know, Rich didn't provide that, though.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that Gary can approve a letter of consent for the consolidation deed.
Second.
For the Eveready person.
Discussion?
I think this actually is important for it, for the cleanup and the rebuilding to actually begin.
Yes, we have to move forward on it.
Yeah.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Alright, thank you. The next thing is the adoption of a jurisdictional annex to the Duchess County Hazard Mitigation Plan. I don't know if you guys had a chance to look through this. We actually have a partially complete hazard mitigation plan on file with the county, but is not completed. And they are asking that we complete this rather lengthy application to do it. Again, we reached out to our attorney to say, you know, what do we need to do here? Because this is, it's a rather long process to get through this, and it'll take, for instance, our superintendent of public works, John Fenton, three to five days of steady time just to complete this. But under recommendation of our attorney, he said he thought it was a useful document in that we should actually pursue it and get it completed as part of the county, and an email back from our attorney.
There is a resolution in here, did you see that?
Yeah, I can, if you want.
I'd like to...
Let me read the resolution. This is adoption of jurisdictional annex to the Duchess County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Whereas the village of Rybeck has worked properly with the Duchess County with the assistance of Terra Tech Inc. And gathering information preparing the Duchess County multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan municipal annex called the PLAN, a copy which is heretofore attached. Whereas the Duchess County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard and Mitigation Plan has been prepared in accordance with the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000. And whereas the Duchess County and village of Rybeck are units of government that have afforded citizens an opportunity to comment and provide input in the plan and the actions of the plan. And whereas the Duchess County and village of Rybeck has reviewed the plan and affirmed that the plan will be adequate no less than every five, and will be updated no less than every five years, and now therefore be resolved that this government body approves and adopts the attack mitigation plan, municipal annex, as its jurisdictional natural hazard mitigation plan resolved to execute the actions of the plan. We cannot adopt this because the plan is not complete. We need to complete the plan in order to adopt the resolution.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Is what we need to do. So the question I have for the board is, in your view, based on the recommendations and any discussion, this hazard mitigation with the plan, be important that we dedicate some resources to be able to complete it, which is gonna take time. And I think that's an investment that we, investment that we need to make. So I would like to make a motion that we work to complete this instead of timetable, working with our superintendent of public works, and possibly our fire department and our police department working together to put this hazard mitigation plan in place and return it to the county.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, is there any, what am I trying to say? How is this gonna be in our favor?
I don't know what you mean.
Are we gonna get grants because of this, or that's what?
No, no. This is just, it's in part of the, kind of the emergency preparation plan for the county. It doesn't like get any money.
There's a few things on here that are wrong already. It says, "The village experienced damages to buildings and power outages as a result of Hurricane Irene. There was damage to a dam that caused it to fail." The dam did not fail, the dam was damaged, but it didn't fail. So I don't know where this came from.
This is the pre-plan that was put in by... This is the, this is the pre-plan that was put in by our superintendent of public works, partially completed a year and a half ago. So this was completed by, by, by us.
Yeah, there's also. Yeah, the salt park and his water main relocation.
It was already done, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So this needs to be updated, but it was never.
It says high priority, but it was, it's done.
But it wasn't completed.
It wasn't?
It was completed.
No, it's not completed.
Then what are they talking about?
And that's what, that's the county, the county is after, after us to complete this plan right now.
So the plan, for the plan, but that, with that action of the water main.
Oh, the water main.
Yeah, the water main was relocated.
But yeah, that, it goes in conjunction. We have to update this because it's now a year, it's now old.
Okay.
We need to update it and bring it current and then submit it to the county. It's a lot of work. It's going to take some time.
Was there a timeframe in that motion?
There had, um, there was no timeframe from the county except for the fact that they want it as, as viciously as possible.
And I'm just curious, I'm, since I'm just reading this document for the first time, um, we resolve to execute the actions of the plan. So I, I'm seeing a, a number of hazards and I see, I guess in the back here, are we signing on to, uh, let's see, it seems like there's a, one of the issues is, uh, loss of power to Ferncliff purchasing.
Yeah, Ferncliff was outside of our jurisdiction.
Yeah, that's not, yeah, it's, it's at us. So, so I'm a little, I'm a little concerned about what we're, what we're signing on.
Well, I think we should complete, I, my recommendation is what I asked was that we complete the plan, right, and then review and then adopt it based on the review. I'll amend my, I'll amend my motion that we complete the plan, review, and make recommendations to adopt it before sending it to the county.
Okay, then how do we get invoiced on this? This, um, Tetra Tech is helping John Fenton and company to complete it?
Yes. They're the only ones that are really.
Do we get public, county monies for this?
No, sure.
Gary, I think Henry Campbell let this a while ago too. He, he had plans and meetings and stuff on this. He could probably guide you. I need to volunteer somebody, but just to.
Well, we spoke to Henry.
Yeah.
And I mean, we have the emergency plan that Henry has prepared and that's part of this, that's already been, yeah. 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 But, you know, it does a good recommendation, we could ask him to participate. But that was part of our discussion outside, you know, with our superintendent of public works on how we could do this to involve the city of fire. And when I meant fire, I was including Henry in that because.
He's, he's an ultimate point of contact. His name's already on here.
Yeah.
Henry Campbell, yeah.
So my, I, I made a motion to, that we dedicate the resources that gets this completed into the county. Take a review and report for moving it in the county.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion of the amendment? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Pat, any other, um, do the minutes are?
I have business.
Oh. Okay, sorry.
That's okay. Uh, it looks like we've received, uh, two bids. Uh, there is an aluminum ramp that I think was removed from this building, uh, that's now sitting out behind the, uh, village highway department. And we've asked for bids on somebody to, uh, take it away and do what I'm also, open the bids now.
The, do we have a scrap value?
No. I have a call to the, um, company that built it. There was a lot of discussion about how to get these things weighed, none of which have panned out. So, uh, I have sent the model numbers to the company that built them and I'm hoping that they can send, call me back and tell me how much they weigh. That's, and that's pretty much on my last stand. Because there is no, um, uh, there is no, uh, um, scaled down with the, out of town as we hoped.
Okay.
It's lost discuss. So I have two bids.
We had a previous bid. All for one. Right?
Yeah, we had one from, uh.
Mike.
From Mike. Well, we had one from before Mike.
Before Mike?
We had Paul Matthews. I don't know.
Two hundred?
I think it was two hundred.
Okay, well, we should really consider all the bids, huh?
Okay, well, this is, uh, here, this is, uh, Mike's, uh, bid for two hundred dollars. And. You know who that is?
I think that's Paul Matthews.
Paul Matthews, okay.
I think so, yeah. Three thirty-five.
Okay, a bid for, uh, three hundred and thirty-five dollars from Paul Matthews.
So it's the same people?
Yeah, okay. So they've resubmitted these bids. Um, I guess I would make a motion to accept the high bid, um, from Paul Matthews and pending the determination of the scrap value of the, um, uh, of the aluminum. And if this exceeds the scrap value, we will accept it. Second.
All in favor? Well, we should, we discussion?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't want to get really detailed, but if, even the scrap value, we have to get it to the yard and.
Well, this is, right, this is turning out to be the problem because we're hoping we could weigh it down at, at the town, but the town doesn't have the scale way to get it to the yard. It's starting to sort of be figuring out how much it weighs.
It would cost us more to get away.
So, so hopefully by contacting the manufacturer and, and I have the, um, the, you know, the, yeah, the model number, I would say the, the tag on them. So hopefully they can get back to me and say, this particular unit weighs this much. And that'll, that'll put some closure on it.
So your, your motion is to accept the highest bid?
I've been pending, pending, yeah.
We don't have to, if, and if it's less than, if it's less than that, how are they going to add value to it though?
Uh, there's a value, you can look at the value of scrap.
Okay. So you're going to ask them for a weight basically?
Yeah, basically, I'm asking them to tell me the weight of the things that they built.
Okay.
And, and then, and then I'll just take the value of scrap over there.
It goes on your discretion.
Are you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Approval of minutes for four, four, four-ten and four-eleven.
You, you guys, you did that at the special.
Oh, we did that, we did it special. That was done.
I wasn't at that.
All right. Pat, correspond, any additional correspondence?
No, we have, well, we have correspondence, yes. Um, we had received a letter from, this goes back to December, from Leslie Kidder from the community nursery school regarding the, shall I read the whole letter or just a synopsis of what she was requesting? She, they were requesting a fifteen minute parking period in from South Street Side for letting the children off to the nursery school. We, she had met with former mayor, um, Torrella and Pete Dunn, and this is just like a follow-up as to what we would do next with all that.
What do they post it now? Does it say no parking?
No parking.
Yeah.
So, so to do this though, we need to basically change our vehicle traffic law.
Correct.
To allow this, correct?
Correct.
And to do that, then we need to have a public hearing.
Correct. Rich would have to draft what the, what the law would be and then that would have to be available and then we'd have to have a hearing and then it would change the, the.
We usually do, well, we did these when we had more than one too, so because, you know, there's.
Well, we're going to have a public hearing. Well, I know what you're saying. What, you wanted, we asked Pete if he had any other changes.
Yeah, yeah, and then Pete had seven or eight of them.
Yeah, do them all at once.
So we're not changing the, the law just for one, one parking spot.
And if they don't have any others? I mean, I think the, the issue here is try to get it done before school season and next school sea, the next.
Yeah, so if there's, there are no others and Pete likes this idea, then I don't have a problem with it. But.
So what do we have to do here?
Pete's aware of this, right?
Yes, Pete is aware of it.
He had met with her.
Just ask Pete again if he has any, if he has any other issues with parking, if he wants to change any.
He did, he wanted, he wanted to say the fifteen minute.
No, I mean any other in the village.
Oh, any other in the village, okay.
Oh, he does support this?
Yeah.
Oh.
So we can just ask him again if he has any other issues within the village, like you said, if he can do it all at once.
Yeah.
And if there are none, we can proceed with this one, right? Okay. Do we need to vote on that?
Mo.
Motion?
I don't know if it's, it's not really an action, I think.
No, I would just leave, I will reach out to Rich also about establishing, getting up something for it. Because he's going to have to work with Pete Dunn and Mike Wolf as to the measurements on South Street for the actual change in the law.
And, and does somebody, I mean, uh, when Pete takes a look, is he thinking about sightlines and all that kind of stuff and all that? He'll be, he'll, so he'll be doing sort of the engineering of the, of those things?
He's really good at stuff like that.
Okay.
Good. Yeah, just so you know, we, we moved, like right across the street here, we moved to no parking to corner side farther up because of the sightlines. So Pete, Pete's very cognizant of it. Okay. So, so he can do what he wants, but he's going to do it, which is great. Yeah.
Okay. I have a couple other, um, I have an email from Barbara Kraft. Dear Mayor and Trustees, I understand that you have given approval for a floral cross arrangement in honor, to honor the veterans. Using a cross as a symbol to honor all veterans, I believe is totally inappropriate. Not all veterans are Christian. They come from all walks of life and religious beliefs, even no belief. We honor veterans because they fought and in many instances gave their lives in protection of our safety, demonstrating respect for the Constitution of the United States. Even the citizens of our village represent people from all religious beliefs or faiths, even no particular belief or faith. I understand that you all had a discussion to consider using a wreath as a symbol to demonstrate our honor of their contribution. A wreath is non-denominational. Under our constitution, we do not single out any faith for our government to support. Even the office of President of the United States lays a wreath at the tomb of the unknown soldier. I believe it is time for the village of Rhinebeck to demonstrate that all citizens honor all veterans regardless of religious belief with a non-denominational floral tribute. I ask you reconsider the decision by funding a non-denominational floral tribute. You will be showing true leadership while fostering tolerance and understanding of all citizens and indeed the Constitution of the United States of America. With Memorial Day a month away, it is not too late. Respectfully, Barbara Kraft, former trustee.
So along with that, I invited some representatives of the American Legion here who have a little history of this. It's, it's known as the American Legion, so.
Good evening. Thank you for inviting me. I'm Dennis McGuire. I'm commander in American Legion post four-two-nine Rhinebeck. I'm Vietnam War veteran. This, uh, for situations number one, I want to get this out of the way first, the twenty-eighth dedication over here. Alan Coon has spent his life, um, looking up veterans right from the Civil War up until his, his finishing touches over here. Unfortunately, Alan was taken from us. So as many people could attend that, we would love to have a big crowd over there for that. That's going to be the twenty-eighth, as we said, around twelve-thirty, when we finish our service at the church over here. Our traditional parade, and I say traditional, is going to be on the twenty-ninth. Uh, we form at fairgrounds, we come down through here, we do honor our, our flags at each locations. And, um, as I say, traditional because we have our cross at the Legion Park, which is Crystal Lake, if everybody is familiar with that. This is something that has been going on here for I don't know how many years. I can't remember. I've been, I feel like a hundred parades and it's always been there. It's meaningful to all the veterans, not by groups of Christians or Jews or Muslims or anything. It's all the veterans. That's who we are honoring that day. It's hard, I know, for the Trout family. They lost an uncle in World War Two. He is honored every year also. If you look up behind you in God We Trust, look at the money. And I'm sure if I saw this lady here and offer a crisp hundred dollar bill on it, saying God We Trust on the back of it, she wouldn't throw it back in my face. There'd be no problem with that then. Military oath, they say, so help me God, that you will cover the laws of the United We place a wreath at the cemetery, uh, traditional, every year. We say a prayer. We're going to say a prayer over next door for all those names on a memorial over there. They're not Christians, they're not singled out for any group. They are veterans of this town and village. As a war veteran, it's difficult to talk about this stuff. It hits me very, very hard that someone can bring in like this, this political correctness stuff that is tearing the fiber of our country apart. This is a tradition that's been in Rhinebeck forever that I can remember, and I've been here quite a long time. I'm going to take a moment, I'm going to show you a cross. I was in New York City as a fireman when the World Trade Centers were taken down. And I worked down there as a fireman. We picked pieces, pieces of bodies up. We put them on stretchers. We had Greek Orthodox ministers come and give, which was a blessing on the last rites, ministers, uh, Jewish rabbis. They would meet us in a certain area where we would bring these stretchers with, I had a stretcher with nine people on it. It's built for one. There was nine red bags on there of people, our fellow human beings, and that's what they were reduced to. This here, this was erected, if anybody remembers seeing this picture. This cross was erected down there. That's one of the first things they did down there. There was no fighting and arguing about putting this cross up here. That cross was put up for three thousand and some people that were killed there. Because we thought we're, there was going to be more of this coming. We thought this was going to be another war. This was put up right there. It stayed there until the whole place was cleaned out. And it's still in the museum down there. There was no objection to that cross by anybody. But politically correct nowadays, what we see is just for some reason, to talk about something, let's do political correctness and let's get rid of the cross. So that's my pitch to you folks. I hope that you stand here for the traditions of the village and the town of Rhinebeck. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Dan.
Well, we had somebody else who wants to talk.
Sorry.
I sat behind that desk for thirty years. I repeat separately, if you don't know who I am. Ben, you were on the board before, weren't you?
I wasn't.
That's right. But not when I was mayor.
No.
You came later. As far as this is concerned, it's a joke because the veterans, they've done their job. And that cross has been there, it was there the thirty years I was there. And it was there before when I was a boy scout. We used to go down, pass it there on the parade. And it's, it's there for one day, basically. It stays for a little bit longer than that, but, uh, you know, it's a tradition, the Legion Park honors veterans, past, present, and future. And there's no reason to remove that. And we've had Jewish people who were veterans, uh, Legion members, VFW members that marched in the parade. Nobody ever complained about that cross till now. And to me, it's a joke because it's ridiculous. It makes no sense. Tradition that we've had here and, uh, it's. Tradition that we've had here, and as far as I'm concerned, if there's an issue about paying for the carnations, the Legion or myself will pay for it, if that's an issue. I don't know if it is, if that's why she's bringing it up. I realize she's a supervising mother, but this isn't the first time there's been an issue with her. So, uh, in any event, uh, I support keeping that cross there. It's been there for years, it should stay there for years, and I cannot see any reason to remove it. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete.
Is this open?
Yes.
Hi. I did not know this was even on the agenda, what was going to be spoken about. I'd rather not have to stand up here and speak about it. Thank you for your service. I respect your tradition. My father was in World War II. My uncle was in World War II. My ex-husband, the father of my daughter, died on 9/11. This isn't a political thing. Back there in World War II, they would not want to be under a Christian cross. I don't care about politics. Honestly, I don't care whether you're Republican, Democrat. I'm not trying to be correct, but if you are trying to honor all veterans and be inclusive, I don't think it should be under a cross. That's just how I feel. The cross doesn't represent me and it doesn't represent the veterans in my family. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joanne Gelb, 36 Mulberry Street. No relation to Joe or Joyce.
Anybody else care comment?
Well, obviously you know I want to keep the cross. That's why I brought this up. At our last meeting, I said I wanted to keep it, and I'd like to note that Rabbi Heck was a guest speaker three or four years ago at the cemetery. He had no problem with the cross. He stood in front of the cross. That's all I can say.
Mr. Mayor?
It is, it's emotional for me because my uncle's buried under a cross in France, so.
Uh, this is what we try to do every year, is have the different leader, a pastor, a rabbi, a priest from Reinbeck, all the different denominations, be the speaker at the cemetery after the service. We try to spread that every year, to have someone different to do that. So we're not going and picking a certain person that I feel isn't the one I want to speak there. It's rotated every year.
I wanted to say one thing more and I forgot. Howie had five, his father and four uncles that served in combat. One of them is buried in France. He was killed in action. Two were in the Second World War in combat. Glenn was in the Korean War in combat, and he was honored for thirty days on the battlefield without rest. That's unreal. Howie, his father, was in during Korean War but served in Germany. But this family represents a lot more to Reinbeck than people that never served. And I, I think that cross honors them probably more than it does anybody else. Thank you.
I think the discussion focuses on whether this is a religious, uh, symbol or a reflection of what we do for honoring veterans. It really comes down to that. And the question, I think what we're hearing is that it's not a religious symbol.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I have to.
No, John, John, no, let me get both perspectives.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And that, but by all, by some people's standards, it is considered, no matter what, how, to you, it can be considered a religious symbol. So that's really the debate that we need to have, and it's inappropriate, even though we've been doing it for thirty years. At our last meeting, we voted to keep, keep the cross. We have correspondence which we received, which we need to respond to and say, we need to make, and, and if we need to make a decision, we need to make that decision based on the correspondence. We have options. We do not have to decide tonight. We can do further analysis and some investigation, contact legal, contact, uh, community members, et cetera, and call, even call a special meeting if we have to, to get this, to come up with what we think is the right answer, if we can, if we're not in agreement on a decision tonight. So I want to just make it available that we can, we can extend ourselves here and look at all of, all of different variables associated with tradition that we, that's been so, that's been honored here in the Village of Reinbeck versus a symbol, versus a symbol.
I think clearly, as this, um, issue comes out, um, it's going to be a hot button for a lot of people. And it's probably our responsibility as trustees to get information from our, um, from the, from the village residents. Because I'm sure a lot of people are going to have a lot of opinions about, about this particular, um, issue. And I don't think we should make any action before we allow, before having the community weigh in and we get a sense for what people's, uh, what people's feelings and sensitivities are. That would be my, that would be my.
Well, a similar thing comes around, you know, the holiday season, you know, you'll have a crush. And some communities will also have the, uh, you know, things from other denominations to try and balance it out. I wonder if we could have a wreath and a cross. If the cross has been a tradition, what if we have the wreath in addition to that? I don't know what the cost of all these things are, but.
It's a timing thing too, because we need to do it by the end for the parade on the 29th.
What about both?
Oh, wreath is non-denominational.
Well, not, yeah, but it's multi-denominational. It's a multi-denominational, so, that's what I mean. But the cross has been in the tradition, so. I don't know. I don't think we should do a constitutional analysis, because that's just.
How are we going to get, how are we going to get the, uh, the opinion of the local residents? How would we do that in a short period of time?
Can't you just go to the religious leaders and see what they, I mean, uh?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Tom Candy.
I was going to say, you have Rabbi Heck, you have the Legion, can't you guys get together? I mean, if you're talking about one piece of land in front of a monument, there's a few monuments here. We don't need this to divide the community, so. I don't, I don't know. Are you talking, are you talking about taking away the cross, period? I mean, I mean, or are you talking about keeping the cross and adding something else someplace else or here, or I don't even know what you're really talking about. As, as Richard said, it's, it's not really, it's going to, it's going to cause an unnecessary uproar and just twist the community for nonsense. I don't mean nonsense disrespecting what you guys are doing, but, um, you know, we've got people so diverse here, it's just going to cause problems.
Why don't we put it out on the Reinbeck Community Forum and see what comes into the village?
I don't think that's appropriate either. We could, you know, we've got to deal with it with a small group that you guys agree upon. And, and you've got to keep the Legion involved, because, you know, these guys have been dealing, it's institutional history for them and for us.
Are only Christians invited to the military? Are only Christians the only ones that serve?
Nobody's saying, nobody's saying that. That is garbage, what you're saying right there. Are only people, Christians invited to the service?
Right.
That is a stupid remark.
To the service, I said in the military service.
In the military.
Right.
I served with black, white, yellow, red, uh, Jewish, you name it. I served with them in Vietnam. They were, and they were just as close to me.
I'm sorry. We can't have a debate back and forth, all right?
I'm sorry, sir.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate the perspectives, but I think it's now, if somebody wants to speak, I would welcome them to come up to the microphone and speak. That's appropriate.
So, Tom, travel course again, but, uh, so like I'm saying, you're right, it's going to divide the community. If we keep discussing the latest tonight, um, I've been to the cemetery in France three times. It's, uh, there's stars, Jewish stars, star dated, crosses. We've got to resolve this before it becomes an issue, okay? Whether Legion has to be a part of it. You guys figure out, do this quickly, you've got to go away before, you know. It can't be solved, I'm sure, without all the uproar in the community, so. I just recommend that.
And I think that's, I think that's the objective. I agree.
So what are we going to do? Have a representative from the Legion meet with, oh?
I'm, I'm saying, don't take the cross away, but we've got to figure out how to include, you know.
Well, that's why I mentioned my suggestion, you know.
Without making it a public forum, you know, it doesn't have to be this big, you know, open crazy meeting that's been happening over the past few years over different issues. We can solve this without that. Let's kind of do this quickly and, and for what you guys choose. You guys are the leaders of the community here, so.
I think if I, if I hear what you're suggesting, and I really appreciate what you're suggesting, basically, is that you'd like to, um, add to the ceremony so that everybody, everybody, everybody feels like they, they are represented within, within the ceremony. Does that, or within the, within the display?
Yeah, I don't think anybody's really being left out. However, I think the cross is being used to divide the community. What, if something has to be added to it, you guys got to figure it out. It's a Legion event, I believe, right? Somehow we have to come to a conclusion that represents diversity of the community now.
Right. And it, it is a temporary, it's a temporary application, you know, flowers. I mean, it's a temporary thing by its nature. It's not like we're permanently mounting something.
Well, they are planted.
No, it's just, it, it doesn't stay there for more than a week or two. They die. They're not, they're not. They're just laid there.
Yeah, they're cut flowers.
I don't think so.
They come in those plastic things and they just go to there and they form a cross.
They're planted.
Oh, okay.
Well, they're not really planted, because they don't stay there. They're just, they're placed there. They're not planted, yeah.
There's also during the holidays, different symbols of religions too, that we've already included. So, you know, it can be done the same way. It's Memorial Day with veterans. It's not, you know, we can put some parade, but that includes the volcano the whole day, so.
Well, I, I'd ask the, the Legion, how would you feel about including a, a wreath in addition to the cross?
Well, it's a fine point, sir, that over here, you have the Christmas tree over here. Then you have the menorah next to it.
Right.
Right here in our parking lot.
Right.
So, I, if that's what you want to do, that, that'd be fine, but we don't want to give our cross up.
But I think, I think to your point, uh, the point is that, uh, to create, uh, to honor, to feel that, people should feel that all veterans are honored, and so let's do that by addition and not by subtraction, I think is the, is, is the direction. I think we should move in breadth. That was yours.
That's what I'm.
Yeah, yeah.
That you said a lot, for me.
And I'd like to invite everybody to come to these ceremonies. Nobody goes to these ceremonies, only the veterans. I'd like you to come to the ceremony. I'd like Barbara Kraft to come to the ceremony. No, you're, you're there watching the parade, but you're not going to the ceremony. You don't even know what it's about.
Yeah, let's keep it focused on.
Okay, but I'm just saying, people complain about things and they don't even know what it's all about.
I didn't complain, but once you're asking, I'm going to tell you that this is not representative. I understand that this is a very powerful thing for you and I honor it. I thank you for your service, but Christians are not the only ones that served, and I do not understand why we sing, I don't think you guys see that the cross is a religious symbol. And I'm not really sure why that has to be associated with the word God. I'm not even going to get into atheists, but there's lots of ways to honor God and there's lots of ways to honor veterans. And I do honor them, and they're in my family as well. I don't think I'm any less of an American, because I say that the cross does not represent them.
So there's a consideration on.
So you think I'm less of an American, because the cross doesn't represent me, sir?
That's your opinion.
Mayor Sipperly, does the cross not represent me, so I'm not an American?
I didn't say that.
Okay.
I didn't say that. You said it. You said it. I didn't.
All right. Um, thank you for, thank you for your comment. I think now it's time for a board to kind of have a discussion about this. We appreciate everybody's input, their sincerity, um, and their understanding about this decision. Because I believe it is an important decision, which is one of the reasons we brought it up at the last meeting. So, there is, there is consideration here about moving forward to do a multi-denominational, I don't know what to call it.
Symbol.
Or symbols, symbols, at, at the American Legion Park, as a temporary symbol for, for everybody, which I believe is possible to do.
So, so is that through adding?
Add to. Add to. To reflect, you know, everybody and their faith.
I think, so, so basically.
Versus changing it completely and going to something that doesn't represent anybody. Try to represent, try to have a symbol to represent the groups. Any discussion about that?
I'd be willing to add a wreath.
Yeah. I think that's, that's, I think that is the way to go.
It's multi-denominational.
It's, it's not multi-denominational. A wreath has nothing to do with any religion that I know of. Correct me if I'm mistaken here. I understand what you're trying to do.
It honors, it honors all the denominations of the veterans involved.
How does it do that?
Well, it, well, I would alter the statement. It honors the veterans non-denominationally.
Yeah, or, well, it's, flowers on Memorial Day. That's the holiday.
Well, as long as the Legion's in favor of that, adding a wreath.
Yes. That's all I told this gentleman here.
I would be in favor of that.
So, uh, sorry. I mean, so you have a cross and a wreath. I mean, I mean, I think something, why not have a star dated somewhere? Obviously feeling there's a religion part of it. I'm not sure, how do you feel about, I mean, this is, there's a question we should bring up in this group, I'm sorry.
I just don't think the Legion should be a part of it, because there's more than Jews and Christians around.
Uh, well, you know, I'm just going by visiting the summer ceremony, the cemeteries in Europe, and there's crosses and stars of dates and denominations, kind of gives you a hope that your, your, you know, your loved ones are in the heaven that you believe in, so. Just a thought. Whatever. I mean, I think maybe you want to get the leaders of the, of the religions in the community.
What if we propose that, that, I don't know if you guys are on, and with the addition of the wreath and then ask some religious leaders if that would be appropriate?
Sure. I, I think that's a, you know, a good idea. We need to act quickly. But I would like to not have to reconvene another meeting to do this, so that we can move forward.
If you approve it now, then.
Right. If we approve it and we get, and get input.
I request that you also include Rabbi Romer, who lives in Reinbeck. Just like there's such a form and there's prophecy, you know, discipending, there's different sects and judaism too, so, thank you.
Can you email me the information?
Thanks.
All right. I'd like to make, I'd like to make motion that in addition to the cross, and in addition, we add to that a non-denominational wreath, but we also reach out to religious leaders in the, in the village, consult with them, and based on their recommendations, right, move forward on their recommendations for preparation for the display that will be held at the, at the American Legion Park for Memorial Day parade on a temporary basis to last a week. week. That's a motion.
Okay.
I need a second. Discussion?
I think that we should, we should move forward. We should buy a wreath and then probably have some of these, it's going to jam an awful lot of discussions in, in, in three weeks. Think about things that people feel very passionately about. I think I'd rather move ahead with this plan and may please not everyone. And then, we can take a little, a little more cooler look at the, at the situation and maybe come up with even a better plan or some, some additional, get, get some additional input. Hopefully, we don't feel under the gun. I would hate to see this decision, or us, make a decision under the gun. I think, starting by adding, as we said, addition, adding is the right way to go. But, you know, we should then, but we should solicit input from, from our religious community leaders. But, not with the idea that you're going to get it all done by a board there. That's fine.
Would you like to amend the motion?
I don't know what you guys think. I don't know what you guys think.
I think that's good. I'm willing to do, yeah.
Maybe.
Okay, I'd like, I'd like, I'd like to amend the motion that Reinbeck Village buys the flowers for a wreath to be used at the Memorial Day Parade. I guess the highway department will also put together the, the wreath, they put together the cross.
They don't actually put it together. They, they purchase it. They think, well, they, 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 they've been over the years, been just responsible for a purchase.
Okay.
I don't know if it has to be that.
No, they, they actually put it together. They buy square things of flowers and those plastic things, and they form this cross, and now they can form a wreath. The highway department does it.
Right, so. Do they actually build it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so what, so we'll, so we'll take it from the top. I'd like to amend the motion that the, that we appropriate the money to buy flowers to be used as a wreath in addition to the cross at the Memorial Day ceremonies, and that the highway department build the traditional cross. And we ask them to add a wreath.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody, for your comments and suggestions. Very useful.
I still have other course.
Yes, please do.
I received a letter today, May nine, to Pat Coon, Village Clerk. Dear Pat, please accept this letter as notice of my resignation from my position as village trustee. My last day of employment will be May nine, two thousand seventeen. My job now requires considerable amount of travel, most days, which does not leave much time for village business and other pursuits. Being a trustee requires time for meetings, both during the day and in the evening, neither of which I'll be able to attend in the foreseeable future. So, after careful consideration, I've decided to relinquish my position as trustee. It's been a pleasure working for the village of Reinbeck and with the village employees and trustees over the past few years. The village of Reinbeck is poised for continued success, and I wish the best for its future. Please let me know if you'd like me to help with the transition of my duties. I will do my best to accommodate as my schedule allows. Thank you to the community and to the Board of Trustees again for the opportunity to work with the village of Reinbeck. I wish you and the trustees all the best. You can email me at sctcruikshank@aul.com or call me if the need arises. Sincerely, Scott Kuchshank. I have this letter. Scott is going to be bringing me the original, so I have it as my official correspondence from him.
I would just like to make a comment. I think Scott Kuchshank, who served two terms on, on the village board, was a valuable asset, not only to the board, but to our community. And his absence will be missed and will be hard to be replaced. But I wish him all the luck in his future endeavors and Godspeed. Thank you.
And my last bit. I received an email from the Hudson Valley Renegades baseball, which is a, it's not triple A, it's.
Single A.
It's a single A affiliate of the Tampa Bay Rays, and they are down at Dutch Stadium regarding having an outing for municipalities. So, I reached out to, to Mayor Bassett, and I have, then went back to the Renegades. So, on Wednesday, Thursday, yeah, not Wednesday, Thursday, on Thursday, June twenty-second at six oh five, the village of Reinbeck will be having our first Hudson Valley Renegades baseball outing, and it'll be the Hudson Valley Renegades versus Staten Island Yankees. It is open to the village of Reinbeck employees and family, and there's a maximum of one hundred and twenty-five people, and it's twenty-six dollars per person. And that includes picnic, food, an hour before the game, and an hour into the game. And it has to be prepaid to me by, well, to the village of Reinbeck, by May nineteenth, so that we can guarantee our space at the Renegades. It's exciting. It's going to be against the Staten Island Yankees. I'm a Red Sox fan, but that's okay. But I think it's an exciting thing for us to, to have, for our village employees to get together and to do this, and to have our family involved. I'm working on seeing if I can have us go out onto the field and possibly have Mayor Bassett throw the first pitch. So, we're working, we're working on that kind of thing. So, it's a positive thing here, so I'm, I'm just getting the word out. So, we've already got five people going, because my whole family's going to go. So, one hundred and twenty more. Come on, on, come on down. That's my, that's all I have.
Uh, we do have, we're not done yet. We do have one more from, from personnel point of view. This also is to Mayor Gary Bassett and village board members. And this is from our chief water plant operator, Tom Wallbank. I have accepted a new position as water superintendent for another village to begin on May twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen. As a result, I am submitting my resignation to you effective on May twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen. I want to thank you for my many years of, of employment. I want to thank you for making my years of employment enjoyable. I requested a buyout of my accrued vacation amounting to two hundred and two point five hours. Thomas Wallbank, chief water plant operator.
You're jumping right to the fire there.
That's right.
Any public comment? Okay.
We had a, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
This Justin Drabek, the.
You just have to sign that.
Oh, that's it?
Yeah, you just sign that. We have to have a motion to accept his resignation.
Oh, sorry, yes. Sorry. I'd like to make a motion to accept our chief water plant operator, Tom Wallbank's resignation, effective on five twenty-four, two thousand seventeen. I make a motion to do that.
Second.
Discussion?
What's our process for looking for a new candidate?
Well, one of the things we do have to do is advertise it internally, to make available to anybody that's already a village employee before seeking any, any other alternatives. So, that'll be the next step. Advertise it. So, we will, I'll work with Pat and Brant to make that happen.
Dutch County gives us the guidelines for our, our water department.
Yeah.
Is that, is there a list? Is that, is this one that, that can?
No, no. First, it's internal, and then it goes to the outside.
But it, it doesn't have to come off of a civil service list, is that what you're asking?
Yes, okay.
Could I say something?
Sure.
Tom was fired by me for our board. He started from the bottom and worked up, and he did an excellent job. He's been there, Lord, he's got to be there twenty-five years, I would think.
Sixteen.
Oh, sixteen?
He came and he left, and he came.
Oh, okay. I, that, that's right. But, the employees were great. I'll have to say that. They did a good job. When they, that was tough, because we were all new, it was a new, you know, sewer system was new, the water system was all new, and we had to start from scratch. But, he did a good job. He was excellent. No. I'm, I'm sorry to see him go, actually.
We all are.
Well, may I motion, seconded.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd also like to add a comment for Tom. As being a new trustee a year and a half ago, I was assigned to water department, and my first exposure was to work with Tom. I found him of the utmost character and dedication to the village and to our water treatment plant. And I will miss him dearly. I think the board will agree with me that he is a valuable asset. But we also wish him good luck on his future endeavors and appreciate his time, that he served with the village.
I also need a motion to accept his request for a vacation buyout.
That's separate, not in conjunction.
That's a maximum, I believe, of two hundred hours. He has two or two point five.
Are you sure about the maximum?
I'm ninety-nine percent sure.
All right. I'd like to make a motion that we accept his accrued vacation amount totaling to, well, we believe the maximum of two hundred hours to be paid out to Tom.
Second.
Discussion?
What governs that? Is that a?
I think it's the contract. The contract does.
A union contract?
Just having, just having the time to look at the contract. No. I did talk to Tom today, so, I mean, it was, and just so everybody knows, Tom and I did have a conversation today about this. He came to me personally. And it was a hard decision for Tom to make, but one he feels that he really needed to do for both himself and his family. So, it's important, that's important to him, and I'm happy for him. Very happy. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Who seconded that, Rick? Who?
Yes.
I have nothing for executive session, unless any of the board members have anything for executive session. I make a motion to close the meeting.
Second, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.